Okay, we have our technical difficulties solved, so we apologize for being two minutes over. If you'll join us for the invocation by Commissioner Scrumalo.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon with gratitude in our hearts during this season of Thanksgiving. Thank you for the opportunity to gather and serve the people of Clay County. I give thanks for my fellow commissioners, each of these four leaders on this dais who work tirelessly in support of our community. I also lift up our dedicated county staff whose commitment keeps our county running smoothly day after day. Lord, we're especially grateful for the brave men and women in law enforcement, fire, rescue, and our armed forces. While many of us will spend time with our family over the next couple of days and friends, eating delicious food and enjoying some backyard football. There are men and women at home and abroad who will be standing watch this Thanksgiving. Please be with them, bless their safety, as we are forever grateful for their service and sacrifice that protect our freedoms and ensure the safety of our families here at home. Most of all, Father, we give thanks for the people of Clay County, this community we are privileged to serve. May we approach this afternoon's work with clarity, respect, and wisdom, so that our decisions honor those who place their trust in us. In your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Thank you. All right, our veteran-led pledge this afternoon is U.S. Army Specialist Ashley Gilmore. Ashley is leading today's pledge of allegiance for us, but she served more than three years in the United States Army stationed at Fort Hood, Texas, with the Third Armored Corps in Alpha Company. She felt called to join the military to serve her country and to embrace the opportunity to meet new people. Throughout her service, she learned that no matter where you are or what your mission may be, you start as a team and you finish as a team, supporting and encouraging one another until the job is done. Her favorite part of military life was the friendships she formed, bonds that grew into a family. Now a resident of Green Cove Springs, she continues her dedication to service as the Personnel Business Partner with the Clay BCC Personnel Department. We thank you for your service to our nation and to our county, and we really appreciate it. So if you'll lead us in the pledge and then if you want to say a few words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to say, you know, thank you for everything. I've really enjoyed working here at the BCC, especially the Personnel Department. So thank you for all the opportunities that I've been given.
I think it's awesome that all your teammates came to cheer you on. I will now call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 25th, 2025. Let the record reflect, all commissioners are present, and we will now move into pet adoptions.
Our first animal today in pet adoptions is Cranberry. Cranberry is a young black cat with liquid gold eyes and a natural gift for theatrics. He's always putting on a show for attention, rolling around his kennels, stretching dramatically, and reaching out with gentle paws as if to say, "Come adore me." Charming, playful, and endlessly endearing Cranberry wins hearts in seconds. If you want a little entertainer who doubles as a top-tier snuggler, Cranberry is your guy. Our next animal is Rapunzel. Rapunzel is the athletic, bright-hearted German Shepherd who's equal parts powerhouse and cuddle bug. She's got the energy of an athlete, the sweetness of a softie, and a personality that lights up every room she enters. Her absolute favorite place, right next to you, leaning in close for love and reassurance. Loyal, lively, and full of sparkle, Rapunzel is ready to bring joy to every moment you share. And our next animal is Cuddler. Don't let this photo fool you, Cuddler is a kitty full of love and in need of a welcoming home. He's truly a sweet kitten who needs some time to break the ice and melt into your lap. He purrs up a storm once he's comfortable and will continue to serenade you with his voice. All it takes is a little love for him to come around, so come and take this shy boy home to his new forever. And our last animal is Dozer. Dozer is a ten-month-old goofball with a life-of-the-party energy and a heart full of joy. He's looking for an active home with a yard to zoom in and people to call his own. Fun, silly, and always ready for the next adventure, Dozy is the perfect upbeat companion. He's also incredibly loving and smart, so what are you waiting for? Come adopt Dozer. And ready to meet your new best friend, our adoptable animals are waiting to add some extra love and fun to your life. From wagging tails to purring kitties, we've got the perfect companion just for you. Want to see who's available? Head over to our website and meet our adorable crew looking for their forever homes. Got questions? Drop us a line at clayadoptions@claycountygov.com and let's chat. Don't wait, your new best friend is just a click away. And if you're interested in helping our furry friends, but you can't bring one home, just take a look at our Amazon wishlist. We're always in need of items for the shelter animals, and that concludes our pet adoptions.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks for filling in. All right, and now we are at our presentations. We have an update today from Aging True.
As Sam's coming up, if I may, Chair, I think he's got an announcement to make, and if he doesn't make it, I'm going to kind of preempt him in making make it. Terry, that you all know from Aging True, has retired, and Sam has assumed the role as, is it COO or CEO? CEO for Aging True, so I just wanted to point that out before he starts his presentation.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Condon. Good afternoon to the commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. Aging True now is in our sixth year in the county, and we're excited and privileged to serve the seniors here. Troy's team and our team have been working collaboratively over the last couple of weeks to address and provide more meals to seniors throughout the county. As you may know, we operate the four senior centers in Middleburg, Keystone Heights, Green Cove Springs, and Orange Park. And there is a waitlist of seniors, that's approximately 400, that need additional meals. And we have a plan, Troy, Steve and I have been working to address that. One thing that is new is that our CEO, Teresa Barton, one of her last activities was to try and get an LBR, Legislative Budget, request through for $250,000 specifically for meals for seniors here in Clay County. And we have been successful in getting sponsorship from Senator Bradley in the Senate and Representative Sapp in the House, as well as support from Sam Garrison as well. So we have submitted that. We are hopeful that it will be approved, and we believe somewhere in the next several months that that will come to pass. And what Troy and I, as well as Krista Martin, who is with me, she is our senior leader here in Clay County, hope to achieve is to begin to build an infrastructure that will allow volunteers to assist us in delivering these meals. One of the things that we have encountered is that we have three routes that we run every day, and we deliver 75 meals to seniors throughout Clay County, and our routes have maxed out. And we don't have the capacity to add to that. We're hopeful that throughout our four senior centers that we will be able to utilize volunteers like we do in Duval to begin delivering those meals. And so our next project is to start with a beta test at the Green Cove Springs facility. Hopefully, as early as February, where we have identified five routes of four meals each that a series of volunteers would be scheduled to deliver those instead of those being delivered by our routing staff. And so we're hopeful. We've had a couple of meetings already with Troy and some of the community representatives to identify volunteers. And to date, we have about 12 individuals who have submitted their interests. We are hopeful to have 45 to 50 individuals who submit interest, because typically only half of those individuals who submit actually come through and pass the background screening. We also have the element of scheduling. This would require Monday through Friday availability to be able to deliver those meals, because once we take them off of our paid routes, we want to make sure that those folks get their meals each and every day. We're also looking to identify a volunteer who will be based out of our Green Cove Springs Senior Center, working between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. each day to coordinate the volunteers. And that's kind of where we are. We are excited. We hope that that will be a template. Ultimately, when we get the LBR received, we're looking to have each of the four senior centers to be a focal point where volunteers will come in and help to deliver those meals. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Well, half actually finalized, so there's a background screening process, and there's also an availability process. So once they find out that they have to commit to either every Monday to deliver on an ongoing basis.
Other questions?
I appreciate all the work that you're doing. I know there's a real need. I had a call from a home health company that they have a client, I guess, who's homebound, and she called to sign up for services, and they told her she wasn't eligible. And so a neighbor brings her food, but that's not consistent, and so I know there's a real need. That was just one I talked to this week, but I appreciate the work that you're doing to try to get that done as soon as possible.
Thank you, and it's a combined effort, and we're hopeful that the churches in the area will also provide the availability of volunteers. And so we work with many different representatives from the community. And with that combined effort, we should be able to get to the necessary numbers that we need.
And Sam, how many seniors do we serve with meals at the centers? Do you know?
Yes, typically 250 each day on average. No, it's combined.
Combined.
So between the four senior centers, it averages 50 to 65 per day.
Sam, you said you need a volunteer between 10:00 and 2:00. Is that every day of the week?
That would be, because the, once we move these meals off of our routes, it's like a work environment, where we would need someone who's there Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 2:00, because we would have a cadre of volunteers, probably 40 to 45. That doesn't mean that all of them work each day. Some people commit one day a month, some people commit Tuesday, Thursday, and that is the challenge of that coordinator is to manage that roster. And if someone were to call off unexpectedly on a day, then that person fills in and gets those meals there.
Only one person that you need that's going to have to do that?
Yes, ideally, Commissioner Burke, there would be that person plus a backup.
Are we using any of, I know Jason has some of, there's Jason, has some of our churches that have helped in hurricane situation. Are we using any of those to coordinate any volunteers, or we haven't gotten that far yet?
I don't believe we've gotten that far, although in our initial meeting, we did have a representative from one of the local Catholic churches. And this will be an ongoing measure. It's our hope that each month over the next several, we begin to gain more and more participants, more and more information is disseminated, and ultimately, two years from now, we hope to have several points. And I believe that once the LBR comes in, the senior centers won't be able to provide the necessary coverage. We will probably need two very large churches positioned strategically that also become hubs as well. And that's what we've seen again in Duval. The churches are the best place because they have built-in volunteers, those folks committed, and the meal service is consistent with their spiritual mission. And that way, we usually get their leadership buys in and is very committed to doing it.
Through the chair, initially when we started talking, we brought in five or six people of the community that have those connections through. So Jennifer Knight, who runs the Soup Kitchen, Brian Knight's wife, so we brought her in. Jack Sears, who used to be the CEO for Northeast Florida Boy Scouts, and now is very connected with a lot of the nonprofits. So he's done these kind of volunteer operations before. We brought him to the table. We brought Challenge Enterprises. We brought somebody from Eric Sacks's office in to really kind of say, hey, what are we already doing? Let's not duplicate the services and work with Sam's team to try to figure this out. So that's kind of how we've been working over the last, probably the last month or two to kind of, you know, hey, is this feasible? Do we think that Clay County, we can make this work in Clay County the way it does in Duval? So that's kind of the people that we started with, and you know, through Jason, we'll expand it to the churches once we know we've got this coordinator in place. And then we'll be looking for a coordinator in Keystone and Middleburg and Orange Park, so.
Yeah, I mean, because we're looking to more than double the meals for people out there.
And one of the things that, you know, Sam and I talked about is, you know, we serve 150, is that the number, 150 at your senior centers today?
Yes.
We know we've got a waiting list of over 400, but we also know there's probably a lot more people that want the meals, but they know if the list is already at 400, they've stopped calling and asking. So that list could easily be 600, 700 people, so there definitely is a need. And, you know, when we first started talking, the need is not isolated to one area of the county. If you look at the map of people that are on their list, there's people in Oak Leaf, there's people in Orange Park, there's people in Lake Asbury. It's not an isolated area that needs this service. So, you know, hopefully, we can build it over the next couple of months and continue to expand it to the other areas.
And one of the other things, Troy, that this is not an income-based program, so sometimes people think that's the case. There's a need throughout all of the communities here in Clay, because people have limited mobility and they're isolated.
I've had seniors tell me it's life-changing, just to have one less thing to think about five days a week to have one hot meal that they stretch. But at any rate, I appreciate what you're doing. If you have a flyer or anything, when you get to that point, share it with us. We have a, we all have big social media reaches, and we're happy to push it out, so.
Well, we're grateful to Troy and Howard and their assistants and their staff. So we will keep you posted as we move forward. Thank you very much for the time.
I had one more comment, Sam. I think, I don't think you were around, but I've told this many times, my in-laws were getting meals sent to them when they were at home, and they were having a rough time, and had, one of them had gone to the hospital, and the other one went with another family member, but the person came and they actually called because they said, "Nobody's here. I can't, there must be something wrong." So it was like more than just a meal delivery, you know, it was actually checking on them, and they got to, you know, got to know them. So we were very grateful for that service for them.
Through the chair, Commissioner Burke, that's one of the things that our CEO Teresa Barton says, is that it's more than a meal. And oftentimes, people think it's just that, but this is a safety check, it's a wellness check. And even more importantly than that, it's also human contact.
Right.
For individuals that we take for granted that we can get out and move and go throughout days, these folks are isolated, and it has a very depressing impact upon them. And we believe also here in the Clay community that the neighbors will be great at encouraging their neighbors, because they are amongst them. So hopefully, we can get this going and get some momentum, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. All right, constitutional officers, I did not see any in the audience. Our Clerk of the Court and Comptroller, Tara Green, is here. Tara, did you have anything for us? Thank you, you too. All right, approval of minutes.
I'd like to approve the County Commissioner meeting minutes from the clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a, oh, we have a motion by Commissioner Renegart, even though he didn't have his microphone on, and a second by Commissioner Scrumalo. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are now to our first public comment period. I do not have any cards today, but this is the portion of our agenda designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters of attention to the board. At this time, the board will not engage in debate or answer questions. You may email askclay@claycountygov.com, and staff will address your questions, or you may email your district commissioner. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted to the clerk on the far left of the dais. You are limited to three minutes for your comments. Before addressing the board, we ask that you state your name and address. The first public comment period is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to us? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Jacob Spadella. I live at 207 Evergreen Lane, Middleburg, Florida. They're doing a sidewalk project in the Greenwood Development, and I've seen some issues, my house in particular. And I've gotten mixed things from many people from the county of where the actual landmark is. But as far as the sidewalk, how high they're going up, it's so close to the house that even my truck parked all the way up to my fence is going to be on the sidewalk. So I'm worried about getting parking tickets later on in the future, or anything else like that. And from where the sidewalk goes up that high halfway in my yard, then goes, which I believe is 25 feet, and then goes down halfway in my yard, and then drops back down to 15 feet, or 14 feet, I believe. And like, I looked at county records, it says the total easement is 60 feet, and then I call and they say that it's 80 feet, but county records, when you look it up, says 60 feet, and with a 20 feet easement, so 30 feet from the middle of the road up. And I'm being told now it's 40, so I'm just kind of confused. And I'm just, like I said, my main worry is I have kids, I'm about to go on deployment, or to boot basic training, so it's just going to be my wife and my two kids there. And it's so, it's 10 feet away from my front door, and people can clearly see right through my house with as close as the sidewalk is to the house. Further down the road, it's a lot closer to the road, and I'm all for the sidewalk going in for the kids, because there's a school nearby, and for us that walk with our kids down the road and stuff like that. I just don't agree with how close it is, because like I said, as far as the parking tickets for blocking the sidewalk and the privacy error of everything. So that's just one of the concerns that I had as far as that project going on.
Okay, thanks. Howard, is there anyone that can?
Yep, Richard. Oh, yeah, that's okay. The timer aspect of it, Madam Chair, if I may, real quick, the timer aspect of it, if you could push the button, thank you, Chrissy.
I wasn't worried about the time. I was worried about his sidewalk.
And then the, on the sidewalk issue, which I was about ready to say, Richard will meet you in the back, sir, to talk to you. He's our county engineer, and I know that there's been some discussions. And Ed, were you involved in it, or no? Just Richard? Yep. Okay, and he'll meet you in the back to talk about it.
But we do, I'm actually your commissioner, so nice to meet you. Thanks for coming, but we do want to resolve that.
Okay.
And anyway, hopefully, staff can resolve it for you, but thanks for coming this afternoon.
Yep.
For taking the time, and thanks for serving our country.
Thank you. What service?
Army Reserves.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? Come on up.
I'm Pamela Henry. I'm a resident of Green Cove at 2080 South, what is my address? It's that button there on the phone, 2080 South County Road 16A. I'm here, I go to Sheriff's Net, and we had a wonderful presentation recently about the human trafficking in Clay County. And he had brought up some of the problems with what they're doing with the AI, with the same gentleman that just lost his life because of being held captive. They AI'd his face on a body, had him send a picture, and then blackmailed him till he committed suicide. And it is a very common problem from what this gentleman was sharing with us. We don't have any education like that happening. I didn't know if that's a school board thing. I mean, I feel like maybe it should be separate from other government entities and stuff. So I just would like to say, please include some education to our kids so that they can know that at these very beginnings of these conversations, how to process through them, so they don't end up like that.
Thank you. And if both of you will get a card and fill it out, that would be great for us, for our record. You have your card, okay. And then, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for public comment? I'd just like to say, ma'am, thank you for bringing that up. We actually had had someone say something at one of our meetings about our sheriff that was not correct because of something she saw on AI. So it's really not just the kids, it's really all generations and how AI can change, can change what someone says. Always double-check your, triple-check your sources. Richard, if you want to make sure that you get with him, and then we will close the first public comment period. All right, we have time to move into our consent agenda. It's items number two through nine. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda items two through nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are now to our discussions and updates. Item number 10, FY25 Grants Department Year-End Report by Megan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Megan Covey with the Grants Department. Per our grants management policy, each year, we report back to the board on how the Grants Department did and what the ROI was to the county. So in FY25, I think you'll see overall, it was a very successful year for the department, but we did have some new challenges related to current events. So these were all areas that did impact the grant landscape this year. We saw an overall tightening of government funds at both the state and federal level. Presidential executive orders made some changes to federal grant programs. We just went through the recent federal government shutdown, which had some of our grant agreements caught up in it. And we also had the added responsibility of financial recovery for the three hurricanes we had last fall. So I think you'll see, as we look at the numbers, that our biggest impact was a general slowdown in the timing of processing grant paperwork, but not necessarily a reduction in funding for the county. So we'll look at that more. Looking specifically at the value of grants last fiscal year, we had approximately $11.7 million in new awards, $17.2 million in reimbursements, which is our cash flow, and that gave us a total of $28.9 million in grant activity. Other measures used to look at the department, number of applications submitted, we completed 78 grant applications, managed 121 grant agreements, and submitted over 1,000 grant reporting tasks. This is that pending workflow that I was alluding to earlier. So these are all things in process that I think we will still see become grant agreements. Our Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, we have about $4 million pending in. This was an opportunity that actually resulted from the three hurricanes. We had additional opportunities to get mitigation dollars. Our other federal funding agreements on the second line, that includes our CDBG grant agreement for the new fiscal year. So now that HUD is reopened, we expect to see that soon. We also just recently accepted our new Safer Award. And FEMA alternate project funding, this is the cost estimate for what we expect to receive for Station 24. This has been an environmental assessment, and actually, the public comment period will end this week for that project. So we expect to see those funds obligated shortly. We're also finalizing the scope of work and contracts for our FY26 state legislative agreements. And we have approximately $33.6 million in FDOT projects, and this all comes from the county's TPO list. $21 million of that is specifically to complete the Northeast Florida Greenway Trail, which we've been working on. Pivoting to look at sponsorships, we had about $1.5 million in sponsorship activity. The largest sponsorship, of course, was our partnership with LMU for the new animal services facility. for the new animal services facility. Other cash sponsorships included support for animal services, our library's baby bookworm program, public safety. And also in-kind donations, we had 45 adopted, 45 miles adopted through our Adopt a Mile and Spot Agreement Program. Additionally, we had $59,000 in improvements to our parks that were sponsored by the Athletic Association. So these two improvements at Armstrong Park were in-kind donations through the Fleming Island Athletic Association. Looking at community support, these are other areas that the department is engaged in throughout the year. Last fall, we did enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Green Cove Springs. Under that agreement, we were able to submit 10 applications totaling $10 million. The city has received $250,000 to date from those applications. Of course, many of them are still under review, but then the city was also able to reimburse county staff for those services. So that was a very positive win-win partnership for both of us. Other things we're engaged in, supporting our nonprofits, supporting the efforts of Clay Day, our Constitutionals, staying engaged with the Northeast Florida Regional Council, supporting our EM Department in that financial recovery and mitigation, providing letters of support for the community, and interacting with our local foundations, Reinhold, the Community Foundation for Northeast Florida, and also IFIS and our Extension Office. Always looking for ways to provide additional professional development, training, and activities for not just county staff, but our nonprofits and others who are engaged in, in grants to make us all stronger and try to maximize funds coming back into Clay County. So the bottom line, our spend for the department was just under $1 million and total revenue activity was about $30.5 million. So that puts us at a 31 to 1 ROI for FY25. And that's not just the, the BCC's ROI on the department, but also the ROI to the taxpayer. Our department's goal is always to look for those alternative sources of funding to support our operations and also capital projects to, to keep projects moving without impacting the tax base. So that is the report in summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for Megan, Chris Reddick?
I, I don't have a question but a comment. 10 years ago, I was involved with the Volkswagen Automobile Manufacturer of America. They misrepresented their diesel mileage and they were fined a mere $14.7 billion. And, and that money went to promote electrification of buses and boats and things, and that's how I got involved with boats. I just want to, yesterday I was notified, a no-fo on garbage trucks, that they, they want to, want us to have two garbage trucks. So I, I don't know that we want two garbage trucks, but maybe FCC would like, and I assume they're electric. So I'm going to forward that to you and you can take a look at it. But these grants go forever. That's 10 years ago, this, and they still had my name and number and, you know, sent me notice of, hey, there's still some money left, so.
Yeah, thank you. Interesting. Commissioner Scrumeloff?
More so comment than question, but first and foremost, Megan, you and your team just crush it. You absolutely do such a great job. And I don't think the public understands how much money this offsets, you know, which is really, really good. And that's why I gave you the nickname Money Bags Megan. Yeah, yeah. Nevertheless, though, thank you so much for that. And then more importantly, specifically, with the sponsorship role kind of shifting, I appreciate you stepping up. And I just want to give Megan all the praise. A lot of the athletic associations have kind of came forward with private dollars to improve some of our parks. And I extend this as an open invitation to the community. You know, if you're a part of an association and you have the cash to, to bring forward to do improvements, we want to partner with you. And Megan and her team stand ready to do that and we'll, we'll keep the ball moving. So, thanks.
Yeah, I just add, it just doesn't include sports activities.
Sure.
We had a million dollar donation to the animal control. And so it can, it can go anywhere, anywhere you have a passion to put your bucks.
We also had a bequest to Animal Services. So someone left their home to the county with instructions to sell the home and give the money to Animal Services. Yeah. Good, good stuff, thanks, Megan. Before we go to the mobility fee discussion, the two commissioners to my right, one of you is actually the commissioner for our Evergreen Lane friend who came and talked to us, it's not me.
I think if, he said Greenwood, which I believe is in my district.
Evergreen.
Evergreen.
Evergreen Lane. And it, I don't, because I don't know but where y'all's district comes together. I told him I was his commissioner and I'm not, so hopefully he doesn't. But I'm happy to help him. But, yeah, I just wanted to correct that in case one of you wanted to, to figure out if he's yours to follow up. So, sorry about that misspeak. I, usually Middleburg, you know, you just take Middleburg. But anyway, sorry about that. Thank you, Beth. All right, we can move into our mobility fee discussion.
Good afternoon, Beth Carson, Planning and Zoning. For many months now, we have worked planning and zoning with Laura Hanson, our Mobility Fee Coordinator, as well as our engineering team, Richard Smith and Earl Boyd, as well as our legal team, have been working with the consultants that the county has hired to develop our new mobility fees. Today, Jeanette Burke with GFT is here in person to present the study, as well as Jonathan Slayson with RSG is virtually here. We will cross fingers that this is going to work. He is in Vermont, so we'll hope he can join us.
Good afternoon, thank you so much for the opportunity to come here and to discuss the Clay County Mobility Plan Update. I'm Jeanette Burke with GFT. And as Beth said, Jonathan Slayson is on the team's call with RSG. So we're the exact same team that did the previous mobility fee study. When you change from impact fee to multi-modal mobility fee, it's the same group of people. So we're very familiar with, with the study. And we just wanted to go over the agenda. And so the agenda, we wanted to give you some general information on the mobility fee study, a study overview, and mobility fee project list, and the fee rate, how it's calculated. And then we're open for questions and answers for that study. So we wanted to go over the general information related to a mobility fee. It's, it's a land use regulation that allows you, the local government, to assess a fee on new development to help fund the cost of your public infrastructure. So that's, that's the idea behind the mobility fee. And the fees are paid at the time of the building permit issue. And it's governed by statute. So on the next slide, it tells you that it's very important to have a dual rational nexus. And that is just to ensure that the impact fee is proportionally and reasonably connected to and has a rational nexus with the need for additional capital facilities and the increased impact generated by new residential or commercial construction. So it's really important that we ensure that that impact fee is proportionally and reasonably connected to or has a rational nexus with the expenditures of the funds collected and the benefits accruing to new residential and non-residential construction. So I kind of read that slide because it's very important. And we've developed a methodology that allows us to test that and to make sure that we're following the next, the rational nexus. So we've had several meetings, as a matter of fact, more than seven meetings over the past couple of months with the stakeholders and developers associated with the study. I think we lost our slides. So this meeting that we're having today with you is an informational meeting, just to go over the process and to come back to you in January 13th, hopefully with the adoption of the plan. Are you?
You can continue on, we have the slides. The public can't see it, but if you just speak to the slides, I think it would be okay.
Okay, so we had several participants. Of course, you're a major participant, yes, we're there. A major participant, the county staff. We've been continuously working with your county staff, keeping them involved and following the process step by step with them. We've been meeting, we've had over seven meetings with developers and agencies and other consultants to keep them in the loop with whatever decisions are being made. So as far as the overview of the study, which is the next slide, we reviewed a lot of data sources and did analysis on those data sources, and I'll step through some of that. And we're going to be documenting that whole analysis. We calculated the project costs and fee very closely with, with the county. We are evaluating the mobility fee by the different districts that we haven't changed since the last mobility fee study. We'll go over some data and assumptions that we made. And then, of course, we're going to document everything. And we've been holding meetings and presentations throughout this study. So just to walk through the mobility fee study. So we start, that's the next slide, we start with land use and the demographic forecast. So for this study, we use the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Model. That's developed by the North Florida Transportation Planning Organization. It's the model that's being used for the long-range transportation plan, which is adopted by the Metropolitan, by the Transportation Planning Organization. It's a five-year process, it gets updated every five years. So the model we use for this, this study, and it's the same model we used for the last study, is the, is the model with the 2015 base year and the 2045 forecast year. It was a very detailed model that gives a lot of opportunity for analytics for a mobility fee study. So we stayed with that model. And we also wanted to have that consistency between the previous plan and this, and this plan. A new model has been adopted since this model that we are using. But what we did is compared the socioeconomic data in the model that we're using for this study against the more recent adopted model and made sure that they're aligned, not only with the socioeconomic data, but also with the network, with all the projects that, that have been updated. So we updated that model to the year 2024. That's our base year for this study. And our forecasting year is 2045. So that model, we've been working with the county on socioeconomic data updates. We've gotten input from developers on those socioeconomic data. So we've done a lot of work on socioeconomic data to make sure that we're reflecting the development correctly that's happening in the county. So as I said, it's a very detailed model. We refer to that as an activity-based model. I don't want to get technically about that, but it's a lot more detailed than the model that's currently adopted. And that's one reason why we wanted to stay with it. So we create a future network. We know which projects are going to come online. They're prioritized in the work program, they're prioritized in the transportation improvement program. So we look at all those projects and make sure that they're reflected. And we use the model to analyze changes in land use and in that transportation network. That's what a travel demand estimation model allows you to do. So you can change land uses, you can change the roadway system and see what the effect is of those changes on the travel patterns within Clay County. So we make refinements as we apply this model, make sure that it's reflecting the correct information. So once we've got all that done, we really want to look at the travel between the different districts that we have the different mobility fees for. So we analyze what, what the, we start with the vehicle miles traveled, like how much travel is occurring within a district, from one district to another district. And we analyze all that and measure that. And then we come up with what we call the cost of person miles traveled. So vehicle miles traveled is a very well-known concept. But for this particular mobility fee study and the last one, you can spend the funding on trails, on mobility hubs related to transit. It's a very flexible, it's not just roadways. So we really want to measure person trips and not just vehicle trips so that we can analyze the use of transit or bikes or pedestrians and, and analyze that better. So that's what we come up with, is cost per vehicle miles traveled in Clay County. And that gives us the ability to calculate base fees for different land uses. There's a lot of other information associated with that. And Jonathan will be talking about these last three bullets, so to speak, the revenue credits and the net fee, that's his portion of the study. And I will go on talking a little bit about how the process works to come up with this cost per person mile travel. So we have five districts. We've got them listed here, and on the next slide, we have the map. There are Middleburg and West Clay, Brennerfield Chase, Brennerfield and Oakleaf, Lakeside and Fleming Island, Lake Ashbury and South Clay. It's the same districts that we used last time around. And we measured the person miles traveled within these districts to come up with that cost per person miles traveled. So as I said before, our base year is 2024 and our future network is the 2045. And we look at the facility types, the number of directional lanes. We calculate the volume and capacity ratios for all these roadways to make sure that we comply with the nexus that I talked about on the first slide, to make sure that we don't get more projects than what the congestion allows us to identify based on the new development that's coming in from the development community. So the next slide is the network that shows you the facility types in 2045. We have number of lanes for 2045. And then we have a capacity, volume capacity ratio in 2045. And that volume capacity ratio is important in order to make sure that we do not charge more money, get more projects than we're legally allowed to charge within the county. The next slide is a little bit of an explanation between the person miles traveled and the vehicle miles traveled, which shows that the person miles traveled, take into account walking, biking, and transit. So this next slide is really very important because this is the slide that shows the difference in vehicle miles traveled and person miles traveled per district. And that is really the basis of our mobility fee. There is the cost of the projects, and then there is the, the person miles traveled. And those two numbers are very important in the calculation of the mobility fee. And Jonathan is going to go over that calculation with you and also over the mobility fee project list.
Great, thank you, Jeanette. Sound check, everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Well, thank you for having us today. As I said, we're going to pick up here on the other part of the equation. We've been talking about the demand side, the travel model piece. The other part of the equation is what are we going to do with the mobility piece? These are the projects that we aim to do. Multi-modal in our thinking. We've got the first slide here, which represents 22 lines of projects. Some of the projects, like Cathedral or Cheswick, I think, Cathedral, excuse me, have multiple components and same with Verbena Parkway. We've broken these up with information from the county staff as to see what would be achievable in different segments. You may not build the complete project in one go. So we've divided certain lengths of roadways into multiple segments. We've been cognizant using standardized costs. So that's been an important aspect that, again, wanted to just bring up to your attention here, that we don't know exactly when we're going to be able to construct some of these projects. And so some of the projects, we have a lot of information on, and other projects, we have less so. So we're using F dot standardized unit cost per mile based on the different type of configuration that these roadway projects have. And then, based on the amount of information that we have, such as right-of-way, preliminary design and construction engineering, we have a factor that helps us escalate some of that cost to account for that uncertainty. So that's what's in the far right-hand column there, that we're deeming as eligible for the mobility fee. Richard is here in the room, I believe, to answer any questions that I might not have in terms of the detailed nuances of any of these particular projects. But we'll go to the next slide for now, unless there's a question. The other part of the multi-modal mobility fee is that we're funding trail projects. Now, I will say in the report, we're going to identify majority of those roadway projects that were on the preceding slide, they have sidewalk majority of those roadway projects that were on the preceding slide, they have sidewalks, they have bike lanes. So they are in essence multimodal capacity as well. But then we have standalone mobility projects that fund certain modes. In this case, pedestrian travel, trail projects that could also be bikes, particularly in the future or e-bikes are becoming much more prevalent. And so a trail project really does provide new mobility options for those that are interested in traveling. Those longer distances, particularly up in an e-bike, it really does change the nature of travel. So we've got $14 million across two particular mobility districts for those types of projects. Then on the next slide, we've got the transit aspect of this. We've been working with JTA. These are projects that have preceded us in the preliminary, in the 2020 mobility fee study that Jeanette identified. We haven't yet constructed these mobility hubs, so we're carrying these forward. These are in agreement with JTA. We realized that a mobility hub, just to define it briefly for everybody, would be a location where there would be transit service to it. But then the hub would be able to construct some sort of either a structure. It might have electric vehicle charging, it might have car, shared car services. It might have opportunities for e-bikes and bike rental services. So these are places to enable individuals to shift and shift between their travel modes to meet their day-to-day needs. So the next slide is where Jeanette discussed, we're talking about two sides of a coin, as I like to say. We have the project needs and that's what we just walked through, which sum to approximately $530 million over the next 20 or so years. These are projects that, as Jeanette said, we've worked with stakeholders. We've worked with the county staff to identify that these are the priorities. And these are the projects that deem to have sufficient public value that it's acceptable to charge local land development to contribute to. So we have the $530 million of potential project cost or capacity. Then we have the demand side of the coin, which is the second to last column on the right, the 2020, the change between the future and today. So there's a positive change, there's an increase in total travel demand, which we're equating to person miles of travel. So in totality, there's somewhere about 3 million new miles of travel that's being generated by the future land use. If we divide the 530 by the 3.1 million, we get a fee rate of $169. That's if we generalize the fee across the entire county and all five districts. Now, in order for us to have that dual ration, that rational nexus and to have confidence that the projects themselves, so let's say a land use change in Lake Ashbury, why are they funding projects in Southwest Clay? And so we've divided the project list as well as the change in travel demand by those mobility districts. And those districts were sized last time in the 2020 study similar to the average trip lengths that are being driven in the county. So they're relatively large areas and they're bound by consistency in their zoning and their land use changes. So those districts were agreed upon early and we decided early in this process that they had enough value that we remained in those districts. So if we look row by row, we have the list of the project capacity and so the cost of all of that capacity divided by the unit of growth, which is that PMT change. And then we're getting to this fee, mobility fee rate in that last column. Just lastly is that we're really focused on legal conformity here. And the idea is that every land use generates trips. And that way, we're treating every land use consistent. Every land use, however, generates different intensity. And so they generate different numbers of trips. But yet they're all paying the same fundamental basis, which is that dollar per PMT. And that's again, just to remind us as we go into the next slide, it's the total cost of infrastructure divided by that change in growth. So this next slide illustrates a change in Florida statute that has been relatively new. We have statute that is advising us that if we have a fee rate increase of a less than 25%, we can do that in, I think, two steps. If I might be mistaken, it might be one step. But if we're able, if we increase up to a 50% increase, we have to do it in four increments. Now, if we were to be above a 50% increase, there is an extraordinary step that we would have to go through that would require additional meetings with you all and a different vote to achieve that. Now, what we're proposing in this case is the mobility fee rate that would be sequenced in four steps from today. Year one would be immediately upon, I believe, 90 days after, if you all were to accept this today, which I know we're not going to, this is for information only. And so we have that phase one, which is the year one mobility fee rate for each of the districts. And as you can see here, it varies by district somewhat dramatically. If any mobility fee district was proposed to decrease, we implement that immediately in year one. However, if it's going to be an increase, that's going to be the phased process. And so at the end of year four, we have the full legal maximum that we've been identified in this fee study. Now, I will remind you and that as a legal, as a legal construct, this study is providing you what we believe is the legally defensible maximum of the mobility fee rate. You have your complete authority to charge or assess any value less than the values on this sheet of the mobility fee rate. The consequence, however, is that we generate less revenue to pay for all of those costs. And that's where the fee rate ultimately was decided upon, is that we needed to fund X amount of infrastructure and we anticipate Y amount of growth. We divide those two and that's where we get the mobility fee rate. Any questions here? This is an important slide. Just want to make space and then we'll go into a little bit of just how it's applied in the administrative sense. And then we'll have more thorough time for questions.
Yeah, I have a question. This is Commissioner Condon. So it may be, it may be easier to go back to your, either your slide for the mobility fee districts or your miles traveled by district. But I'm wondering why you, why the group left the mobility fee districts the same. And my issue is that specifically with the boundaries of Lake Ashbury and South Clay, but in the Green Cove Springs side. And the reason is because if you go to the slide that tells the difference between vehicle miles traveled and person miles traveled from 2024 to 2045 in South Clay, I can tell you, because I represent most of South Clay, but not all of it, the only development that is approved and will be approved, large-scale development in that area is Governor's Park and Agrocola Farms. And my issue is that you have all of South Clay, which is not in the urban service boundary, paying for the development that's going in one particular area. And that is not fair because I have people with generational land that will do heirs exemptions and they're building a house, one house, that is not adding a huge difference to county services. And they have to write a check for $20,000 before they get their building permit. And that's not picking out nice countertops or fixtures or anything. It's just paying a check to the county for $20,000 when you include the impact fees and the mobility fees. And if you add on to that, I happen to have a conversation with one of Commissioner Burke's constituents because her family lives in my district and she was calling me about something that was totally unrelated to this. But she and her husband are building on family land. And they had, because she, of where she lives, she lives actually in that little squiggly corner of the Lake Ashbury map district. But because she lives there, across the street from her, across the road from her, her house would have, her impact fee would have been $7,000 less. But because she lives in the Lake Ashbury Mobility and Impact Fee District, she had to pay $27,000 to build a house. And this is a husband, wife and two little kids. This is not a big developer. And so I don't, I, so those are my, my questions are, I guess, multifold. Why did we leave Agrocola Farms and Governor's Park in the South Clay District and make the rest of South Clay pay for it? And then, and then I guess I would also ask similarly for Middleburg West Clay, why we think trips in the next 20 years or however many, what is it, are going to go up? 40 years? Is that how? No, it's 20 years.
20 years is up.
The trips are going to go up when there isn't development approved. And that's my issue. And because the whole intention was that this was not going to disproportionately impact residents who've lived here, and it is, and because of those two things. And so, and it's the way the calculation is set, like where does somebody come up with in 20 years, there's going to be a whole lot more vehicle miles? Where are they, where are they living? We aren't putting them anywhere because there's not development approved.
So it's a little difficult to tell from this map, the colored map, but Governor's Park is part of the Lake Ashbury District.
But Agrocola Farms is not?
Agrocola is not, no, but Lake, the Governor's Park is.
But I go back to my same thing. What you, the geographic on here, there is no development that's going to occur past here and really past there. Because it's not in the urban service boundary. So what you're telling me is that, that staff is going to come and recommend us again to move the urban service boundary. And I'll tell you, I will die on that sword. We are not moving the urban service boundary. And I'm telling you, there are how many, how many homes approved in this county? And what do we hear from residents over and over and over and over and over and over and over again? Stop approving large-scale development. The residents who are here are feeling overwhelmed. And you're asking us to add into this 20 years of, oh yeah, bring them on. And I don't understand the calculations. Where do these numbers come from? That's my issue.
So my comment to that is, do you want us to redraw the lines to put Agrocola in Lake Ashbury? Is that what you're asking?
Well, all, what I'm saying is what you're, what they're proposing in this or your, I don't know if it's staff or the consultants, but what they're proposing is that all of South Clay pay for roads that are in the mobility. There's, there's one road in South Clay that's on this sheet, but that's not what's going to happen. Like, like the projects don't align with the districts. So there's one, so there's one road on this mobility fee district that's State Road 100 Bradford County line to Putnam County line. We all know that's not happening. That's DOT. They have, they don't have that. I go to the TPO meetings, they never talk about that.
I mean, we can, and we can take that out and I'm speaking, I mean, whether or not getting the weeds today, if there's stuff you want to give us homework on and us look at it.
My issue really isn't the projects. My issue is really that, is the fees aligning with the people who are going to have to pay them.
And the fee in South Clay is going down.
Yeah, it's going down.
But not that, he said down immediately, but it's not, it's going down over four years.
No, if it's being reduced, it goes immediately.
This sheet has 36.
If it's up, it's for four years.
3616 to 2590 immediately.
That's from 2020, so it's going in year one to 2590? So it goes down?
Right.
Okay. So, but then what about Agrocola Farms? Are there no road issues coming from that? And nothing else in South Clay?
No.
Okay. So what is being developed for Middleburg West Clay to go up?
218.
Yeah, 218 is the big gipper in there.
I saw that it's $33 million. But what, where is that money going to come from? What houses are going to be built to accumulate that?
Not many necessarily, but I mean, that's the road, that's the road we would want it to go to if, if we are using. If we have a road in that area, it needs to be that one.
Oh, I agree with that. But it's not going to happen. So why are we making people pay it? You follow what I'm saying? So the people in that area that are going to build houses
Right.
are not large-scale developers.
But we still pay them because I paid mine as well.
I agree. And that's painful for the people who are here. That's, so I want to know where the numbers come from to say in the next 20 years, there's going to be more vehicle miles traveled or person miles traveled in that area that drive that.
So that comes from the North Florida Regional Planning Model. The socioeconomic data and the population data and modeling expert on.
Well, that data is developed by the North Florida TPO and that's done in coordination with each of the counties. So when they develop that data, they coordinate it with Clay County for the future forecast. So it's based on zoning that you have, it's based on your future land use map, it's based on your comprehensive plan, it's based on other processes. We did not make that up. We look at those processes, we coordinate closely with the county and that's the data that's in the model. So that data is developed with the county in coordination with the North Florida TPO. And it's done every five years. So it's updated every five years. It's the Long Range Transportation Planning Process. So that's where it comes from and it's based on your comprehensive plan, your future land use plan and any development that's already been approved and any development that the county is aware of.
Yeah, that's where I go back to, there's not any in that area.
This is for 2045.
Most of it's not in the urban service boundary. The majority of that is not in the urban service boundary. So I don't know where that comes from.
We'll get a look at that. I mean, that's something we'll look at. But I mean, it's all based on the TPO and.
Well, I think it matters to have the conversation in, in the public because they wonder where these numbers come from.
Oh, no.
And, you know, I do get the calls of, we have to write it. I mean, Commissioner Burke's resident wrote a $27,000 check. And she, and she got her building permit.
Understood.
So, I mean, y'all know, I know you know, but I, but it's important for, I mean, I think there's other people who don't know. You know, and there's people, and look, it's not, this is not a poke at NEFA, it's not a poke at the, the big builders, but they, those people get to wrap it into their mortgage, right? You go buy a D.R. Horton house or a whoever house and it's wrapped into the whole fee. But for the, the more, and probably the people who are going to build if there are any vacant lots in especially Commissioner Renninger's district because there's not a lot of area left. So it just, I just, that hits our constituents a lot harder.
But in Commissioner Renninger's district as well as Commissioner Scrumel's district, there are no road projects essentially. There's one road project.
Right, I saw that, yeah.
So their fees are also going down.
I saw that, yeah, I saw that to $10.
Right. And so the projected growth for the time period through 2045 is really the Brennan Field, Oakleaf area and the Lake Ashbury area, the two master plans. And that's what was established back in the early 2000s was where the growth was going to be targeted. So, and, and we deal with the pressure all the time of developers coming in and wanting us to okay and agree that the urban area should be expanded. So we're constantly telling them no as well. So we try and screen them before they get to you. You'll, you'll be seeing some more.
Oh, I know. They tell me all the time.
I have, I have a similar question primarily because as far as, so I know that the Orange Park part of my district is fully developed. We're not looking at any road projects. Oakleaf is similarly situated. So I'm wondering how, we are second highest on this list. So maybe some clarification as to where we're expecting those roads. And then the largest lift I noticed was Cheswick Oaks, which is cost prohibitive. Coming in at $39 million for what, a mile, a quarter of a mile?
So, but that road is a very critical connection so that you don't have to go up and out of the county to come back down. So it would be very critical to get that connection across county in that part of your district.
No, I understand that. Earlier this year, we had TPO come in and tell us that that's a $100 million lift. So I understand how critically important it is. I'm trying to maybe, back to my original question. Where are we seeing roads that these dollars would be allocated to in the Brennan Field, Oakleaf area?
On this, it's on this.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's.
So Cheswick Oaks Avenue Extension, State Road 23 to Gadwell Road.
Yes.
Backsley Road two twenty to, um, twenty-one.
District Drive, which is a critical one there by Kendallwood. Uh, it's coming across Cheswick Oak was going up north to.
It's gonna connect to the north by the park.
Okay, um, so all of those projects tie into Cheswick. So I guess, um, what, what gives me pause about this, I, I do appreciate the findings of the, of the study. Um, but because in my district, the, the problem, the touch point, all roads lead back to Cheswick Oaks, all of those dollars, um, that we're talking about need to be allocated um, and assessed by developers. Um, I think that, I wanna say this as polished as I can. Um, we, we had these details already based on the conversations that came to us before. Because when we were talking to TPO earlier this year, their concern was connectivity also. They wanted to know how to get, I mean, of course, my Cheswick Oaks, my folks out there tell me the same ti, the same thing every time. You've got a lot of stakeholders involved. Your firefighters can't get to anywhere without going through Duval County because of where Cheswick Oaks is located. So like, I understand the import, um, but I guess, um, for me, I, like I said, I do appreciate the, the study, but all it does is highlight a problem area that we already knew we had.
So there are two other roads that are important to your area.
You're talking about Old Jennings and.
Long Bay Road and Old Jennings. So, you know, we have others that are not quite, that are spreading out in your district, so.
And you also have the, I think another one that's a big one is the Long, uh, Long Bay Extension to the north there, Commissioner Compaor.
Yeah, but when we talked about that, there were, um, there was a lot baked into that.
There is, but there's less baked into that. That's like making biscuits instead of cinnamon rolls. There's a lot less baked into it.
Yes. Only if we're comparing it to Cheswick, I think, but.
Agree.
Point well made.
So, so maybe if you'll help me with my memory, and I kind of understand, but I think it's important for the public to understand. One of the frustrations, I think, is that they then get all kinds of credits to build. And so, like on, like for instance, Clay Dairy Parkway is on here, it's a hundred and fifty million dollar road. And that's all gonna be most likely built by developers for, for mobility fee credits or not. Like, some of these roads, like, like for Commissioner Compaor, you know, Cheswick, some of these others, like the one hundred, um, expanding through the Keystone area where there's, there's not, it, not right-of-way, not, it's prohibitive. Like, it's not even on anyone's radar. So those are unlikely to really happen in our lifetime. But Clay Dairy, they say is going to happen. And so, i- in fact, I had someone try to tell me that it's like imminent, the beginning phases of it. And so, that was interesting to me. They were trying to use it to make a different argument, however, um, that I don't wanna talk about today. But, um, I just was curious about the credits.
So, I think Richard could be a big part of this conversation, but yes, if the road, that's the whole key of the mobility fee list. It's on this list, and y'all tell me if I'm misspeaking. It's on this list, it's important enough because it's, it's needed, right? And that's why it's on this list, so that's why there is the option. If a builder or developer builds it, they can get credit for that because of the benefit of that road. Also, most of the times, if you talk to those guys or gals, they'll tell you they can build it for cheaper than that, right? Cheaper than we can build it. Um, so I think that's part of it. Um, and I had another thought, and it's just.
It also expedites the process, because they're, they're motivated and they're ready to build. They've got the money available and they can build it, and we offer the credit. If we're waiting to collect the fees, it's gonna take us a lot longer to build it.
And my, what my other thought was that my older fifty brain forgot there for a second was the fact, Cathedral Parkway is a very good example. So the western edge of it, which was mostly mobility fee credit, is four-laned, it's ready to go for a while. The county portion is still two-lan, right? Which I think is probably, this is probably still on here to make it that four-lane. So it's what you get now, if it's a, if it's a developer built and they get credit, this is the product you get now, and if it's a county built, this is as much as we can squeeze out of that nickel.
And how do those credits work? They're only valid in the same district, or they're valid anywhere in the county?
They're valid in the same district unless they can prove by traffic study and analysis that they're, that they benefited some other district. Sometimes, not frequently, sometimes if it's an adjoining district, that correlation can be drawn by traffic study.
And do they ever expire?
That's a great question. Yeah, that's something.
I don't think so. I think statute has made credits pretty flexible.
There you go.
And the reason I bring that up, and I know that I've told you all this before, um, but this was a number of years ago that I brought this up. Um, the school district got burned pretty bad when I was on the school board because somebody in Fleming Island popped up and had credits that were over twenty years old. Wait, let me use these, and it was like, whoa. And it, because it, it hurt the school district greatly.
We don't like it either, but.
Yeah, if we could make them use them.
Is that, question, is that through state statute, or, so we can't do anything about that? Okay.
But it, but it's a double-edged sword. You know, you get credit in twenty twenty-five, and if you use them in twenty forty-five, it would've tripled the cost of that road, or whatever they got the credit for. So it's, you know, it kinda may nullify itself out. I don't know, I'm just saying.
Other questions?
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the, the graphic you have with a little guy on a bicycle? Is that a motorcycle, a bicycle, or an electric bike?
What, what would you like it to be, Commissioner? What would you like it to be, Commissioner?
Well, my real question is, we're, we're, and you, someone mentioned it, we're getting more and more e-bikes, uh, golf carts and things as such, so how do you account for those in those traffic studies?
So, um, we do, in, in this activity-based model, we do have trips generated by different modes. Um, so the model is, uh, based, was based, we did a survey a long time ago. We had some survey data, but also census data. And we look at all these different sources to find out what the possibilities is of using different modes. And it's based on the household characteristics a lot. We have age, we have the, uh, we know if there's children in the household, what the average ages of the people in the household. So there's a lot of analytics and data that goes into that to establish uh, what percentage of the people would make the trip by bike, and what percentage of the time they would do that.
We're getting more and more, you know, these, uh, micro-transportation units. And I, I, I'm not sure whether they should be on sidewalk, in the bike lane, or in the traffic lane, quite honestly.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion about that, and in different communities and in different areas and different countries, they make different decisions based on the infrastructure and the, the amount of people that are choosing to use that, uh, mode. But yeah, it's definitely, um, enabled people to travel farther, uh, with a cheaper mode, which is increases the mobility of the people.
You know, because we're, we're looking twenty forty, twenty forty-five, I mean, that, that's a long way out. A lot of things are gonna change.
Yes, that's why those plans are updated every five years to take these changes into account.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. We're still in the middle of the presentation, if, with your permission.
Oh, I thought he asked for questions.
Well, he just did that because he thought that maybe at that point uh, somebody had questions, but we still have a couple of slides, not many, but it might be beneficial to go over the rest of the slides, with your permission.
Yeah, are you, how, are you doing that?
Can do it at the end, I guess.
But don't forget it.
No, I, I know it, it's a lot.
The next one really clearly shows how the calculation is done. So I think that's a very important slide. It shows all the different inputs, variables, and data points. So Jonathan?
Sure, thank you. No, I think the, the detour was helpful here because there's the, kind of the demand side and the project side, which now we've had a little bit of conversation with. And that establishes the mobility fee rate, which is that dollar per person mile of travel. Now, at the end of the day, however, um, like Commissioner Condon said, it, it matters who's gonna pay that fee. And so this is the calculation for how that fee is established. Every land use has a trip rate associated with it, and then we're using national guidance called the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. And by, based on the land use type, there's an estimate of how much impact they, that every land use generates. So a single-family home generates somewhere around ten trips a day, for example. Um, and an office building is like one point five trips per, uh, I think, per peak period at the end of the day, per every one thousand square feet for maybe two or three employees, for example. So those are the trip rates. Then every dis, every district, so this goes again to how those districts are really important here. Every district has a traditional or an average trip length associated with it. And we have collected that data from surveys, and those surveys then went into the travel model. And so, every district is customized. Uh, the trip lengths in Lake Asbury is very different from South Clay. Then we have the fact that land uses generate the different impact on the network. You might generate ten trips at a house, and we're saying a hundred percent of those trips are new people. They're coming into the district. However, if I were to go put a gas station in, a lot of my trips are gonna be people who are gonna be detouring from existing roads or coming in, but it's not generating new users to the system, let's say. So that's where there's a reduction if you are a land use that's been identified by ITE as having a number of trips that are basically generated by others that are existing on the network. Then we've got two other factors to, uh, just illustrate here is that we wanna, uh, reduce the potential for assessing the same trip twice within the county. So this is the double counting factor. So what is the probability of a new household then that's going to a workplace that's also within the county? Because we're assessing the person miles of travel, which is the full distance between the origin and the destination, we wanna cut that trip in half and assess one part of the trip on the origin side and one trip on the destination side. So there's a factor that accounts for that. Then there's a regional road factor, which we're accounting for, that says out of the total amount of VMT or the, the car trips potentially, because, um, we're, we're saying pedestrians can't use the toll road or other major facilities that are outside of, of our control. We're discounting a portion of the travel that occurs on facilities that we're not contributing to. So that's where there's a reduction in, in the actual assessment on a particular land use. We then have that factor that converts for how many persons of miles of travel for every vehicle miles of travel. So that goes to the last commissioners, uh, for instance, Lake Asbury in the future increases dramatically the amount of walking trips. Uh, and so we have a function that says how many person miles relative to the vehicle miles that we have. And we need to do that because the ITE trip rate only tells us those are vehicle trips. And so we're converting from vehicles to persons using this factor. Then, uh, we have the, the fee rate, which is that PNT, uh, number at the end. That's the important number that we've just been discussing. The net mobility or the mobility fee at the end of the day uh, is the multiplication of all these different factors together. And at, after that, we reduce the fee for credits. And that could be if an infrastructure credit, like we just discussed, if some, uh, someone has the wherewithal to build the particular roadway facility, let's say, or the, or the mobility home. If they were to build that, then they get that dollar value back in credit, and they can reduce their mobility fee liability. The other type of credit is that we realize, and I think the South Clay project illustrates this well, is that there's a lot of folks that are gonna use that roadway that don't live or they may not even go to any land use in Clay County. So at the end of the day, there's somewhere around thirteen or twelve percent of the amount of travel that's happening in the county that's not associated with land use, uh, in the county. So what happens is that we're not gonna generate sufficient revenue just by collecting for the fees. So, uh, I think, again, Commissioner Condon, I think, uh, you illustrated that where is the, where's the revenue gonna come from? Who are we charging? Is that these projects, they, they do exceed our full capacity to, to get revenue. And so what we're gonna do is use, much like we have been doing over the last five years, we're gonna use the revenue from the local options, say, uh, fuel tax, the second loft, and we might need money from the infrastructure sales surtax. But right now, it appears that the revenue collected by the county for the loft is sufficient to pay for that amount of, uh, the, the gap in revenue, if you will, due to external people, uh, consuming that capacity on the system. So I've got one more slide, and then happy to answer, again, further questions and have discussion. So some key takeaways, we wanna be responsive. We wanna update this fee. We need to be sensitive to the changing nature of the state statutes. Uh, they've been really, uh, changing in the way that mobility fees need to be constructed and designed. We are consistent with the currently imposed fees, so the county's been, uh, managing these fees for the last five years. And so there's a, there's an emphasis to try to consistent, uh, make this consistent, make it easy and streamlined so that we can manage this going forward in the future. The fee rate remains under the fifty percent, uh, increase that we've been aiming for at the statute uh, based on that mobility fee rate per district. So that's where we'll wrap up. We've got a thank you slide, but, um, happy to keep this on the screen if we wanna bounce back on and answer any further questions. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Scromelo.
Yeah, my question was, does state statute lay out the total number of projects that can be into the study? As far as, yeah, how does that work?
No, none.
No.
Everybody's gonna, could you go ahead, Jonathan?
All right, Jeanette. Uh, no, the statute does not stipulate any type of constraint as to the number of projects. It doesn't discuss the number of districts. Those are been established really by case law and by precedent for mobility fees or impact fees preceding this. Uh, other than ensuring that, that double, that rational nexus that Jeanette pointed out in the beginning, that growth doesn't pay for more than its fair share. That's really the critical piece of this.
Got it, thank you.
Other questions? I think I would like to see Agrocola Farms, um, into Lake Asbury, because I looked at the project list and Clay Dairy Parkway, US seventeen to State Road sixteen, says it's in the Lake Asbury. But that goes directly through, um, or it goes right beside Agrocola Farms, because now with BTI owning both developments, I, I guess I would just question that. Do you, do you follow what I'm saying?
No, I don't. Go ahead, tell me, I don't understand that.
So, it, it looks like the project, that's the big ninety-nine million dollar one on the project list? And.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
Clay Dairy Parkway is the red road on there.
Yeah, but they're gonna go up because they're gonna connect, right? Because BTI told us they're connecting that, I don't know what the road's called, but they're connecting in, inside, so go from seventeen, um, west. They're connecting that road that goes through Agrocola Farms up through into Governor's Park to Clay Dairy Parkway.
Okay. Well, I know.
So to me, that's, that's the kind of development that needs to help contribute to that ninety-nine million dollars. So that the county, Richard's nodding his head, yes, so that the county doesn't have, it's important to move people.
Right.
Richard Smith, county engineer. Uh, Ms. Condon, you brought, a couple of things came to my mind in this conversation, the open conversation we had. What you're saying is exactly right. It doesn't affect the project list. The project is completely within the Lake Asbury district. But every development, every rooftop that comes off of Clay Dairy Parkway, the, the mobility fee map should be adjusted to reflect Agrocola, and they're not building that road just to build to the east between Clay Dairy and seventeen, the old, that area. They're gonna be building westerly as well. So that needs to be adjusted. It won't affect the project list, it won't affect, we're not putting any road in Agrocola, because there's a main feeder road that'll feed down into the neighborhood that's not part of the mobility fee list. They'll build that with their own private money and their own development money. So that's important. The other thing that really came up was something that Jonathan said with me, and this may hit a, a string with you too, Commissioner Condon. They ta, he talked about the individual that comes in and adds to the growth. What about the individual that moves out of Lake Asbury, because they don't wanna go on a sixty-foot lot anymore and moves down the Thunder Road? Why can't they take their mo, can they legal, can they take their mobility fee and say, I've already, I'm building a new house, I'm not adding, I'm not that individual adding to the growth? Is there a way to do a local factor that way? It just made me think, because Jonathan made a very good point. This is not for the people that live here that are moving to a different location. This is for the people that are moving in from other, outside the county boundaries.
I thought we'd asked that before.
What's that?
I thought we had asked that before.
Well, I've never asked it. I didn't even thought about it. Well, I've never asked it. I didn't even thought about it.
Well, because we definitely have people that feel that way.
No, it's a.
I had asked for exemptions for the same.
Yeah, it's about, I think it's about a request to legal.
Yeah.
Does the statute allow us? So.
Okay. What did you call it, a local what? So if you, you got it, it's in the wording?
Like portability, like portability within the county.
You already pay, you're not adding, you're you're going to say make just as many trips to Winn-Dixie as you were, whether you lived on Thunder Road or or, you know, Lake Asbury Drive.
I think you're still adding.
But you still are adding.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're still adding. You're vacating a house that's going to be filled with somebody else.
Yeah, still a plus.
And that mobility fee, impact fee, all those have been paid.
There's two sides of that, but it would be, it just, when he mentioned the individual coming in from outside, their family coming in, that made me think, but.
Does that analysis fold in, somebody, what if it's somebody within the county that's moving in? Like, it's not necessary the the person moving into the the new vacant home would be out of county. So how do you capture those imperics?
I I moved from one camp, one house in the county and built a new one and I paid my fees.
I think that if I'm understanding correctly, if you are impacting with a new development, the the concept of portability is that there isn't this additional impact, I'm within my community. So how do you, if if I'm within my community, I was already engaging with my community in a certain way. I think that that's not an easy one-to-one to make.
Agreed, but when I vacated the home I left to the new one I built, somebody else.
Somebody else moved in.
Moved into that one.
And didn't have to pay it.
So there is additional impact. They didn't have to pay.
Right.
Maybe I charged them and got my money out of it.
Yeah, it's at the time of the permit.
Toward you, they said, Eric says he can't hear me. Ms. Stewart, the teacher.
I don't typically get, I can't hear you.
I know.
Thank y'all, I'll speak into the mic.
A question.
Sure.
So another way of looking at this, the AgroCola people, if it stayed the way it is, they wouldn't have to, they would pay what her district is paying.
And I don't see a word on here that connects AgroCola to Hitchcock.
Which is going to be a lot less than what you're paying for a brand-new house, yeah.
And and you or, you know, once you're, once you're moved on and the next commissioner, those are, they're going to get those phone calls. You know, why is my, well, they may not, but it's the the builder will have it.
But if it's the people around there that have a a bunch of land that have been there, just, is it just AgroCola that will be added or is it the whole area that will be added to Lake Asbury District? Right around AgroCola? Because you're going to have the same kind of people.
Everything else, I think, is south of the urban service area. That honestly, I'm 90% sure that's why we did the map, the way we did it is because of that urban service boundary, so.
It looks like it.
Yeah, that's what it is.
That's why I was asking, but it said it wasn't updated since 2020 and AgroCola didn't change until after that.
Correct.
So are you adding AgroCola then or not? Or do we don't know yet?
I think we have to look at it.
Yeah, we'll have to look at, that's on my list, that's on my to-do list. So our to-do list.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of just that whole side, but I think following the urban service boundary is appropriate. Because now I'm much more educated and I'll never vote to change the urban service boundary.
I just don't want to get the generational land people around it.
Exactly, yeah. Now, you know, obviously, like, the Gustafson property by the fairgrounds, it's already in there.
Right. Something's already in there.
Yeah.
I I will say, thank you. I know that you all have worked really hard and our staff worked really hard and I appreciate it very much. And you're going to keep working because we had questions and you're going to come back in January.
Just add the comment, I mean, that's, we're going to keep working, there's more work to be done before it comes back to you in January. So stakeholders, I've told them that as well. So, you know, if you have questions, send us emails, that's what I would say, send emails with your questions.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is well after 5 o'clock, so I will move, Megan doesn't get to go home early tonight. Item, we're going to move forward to item number 13. This is the, was, I guess, carried over from last board meeting where one or two commissioners ask for presentations on our substance abuse disorder recovery center, C M R. And so we're going to hear presentations. And we have three presentations. And Karen, do you want to kind of give us the ground rules on that?
Sure, yes ma'am. So yes, correct, this was a carryover from last board meeting. The top three ranked contractors are here to give presentations for C M R services for the SUDS building, as you indicated. They will be given in alphabetical order. They are actually filed within order of ranking also. Each of you should have a scoring sheet in front of you. So after presentations, the individual presentations, you can ask any questions of the contractors at that time. After all three presentations are given, then you will score, one to three, one being your top choice. Okay, thank you.
Presentations are how long?
We ask that they stick to five minutes, but. Okay.
Just, we were, actually said five to 10 minutes, just to clarify.
Yes. Good. All right. You can begin.
I'm Billy Dale Tyson, chief operating officer at Alden White.
I'm Brett Nansen, public sector division leader with Alden White.
Cindy Rice, project development manager, Alden White Constructors.
In the early 90s, I had a family member that was receiving treatment for a mental health disorder. And my mom would often talk about the long drive that she had to make to Baker County. We lived really close to the Orange Park Mall at the time. And the anxiousness of the drive out there and then the stress and, you know, really the frustration of the drive home. You know, providing close proximity for mental health is absolutely critical for our residents in northeast Florida. And I applaud Clay County for making another step in that direction. You know, this is the type of project that gets me excited for the type of work that we do at Alden White. Projects that impact our community and projects that we can get excited and get behind. We have nearly 20 employees that work and live in Clay County. I also have, my family has a small business in Keystone Heights. Someone that I know will be impacted by this project once it is completed. At the end of the day, you have to have passion for a project and then you also have to have the expertise for it. And Alden White absolutely has the expertise to complete this for Clay County. I think the the critical things for Alden White is, one, our ability to self-perform work, but also our extremely deep bench. I'm a baseball player and the ability to bring the right team at the right time in the game is absolutely critical to getting work done. And the team that we've selected has a few key key attributes that I think really provide a differentiator for Alden White. One, extremely deep bench with the terms of renovations. Renovations are a unique animal, which Brett will touch on. Mental health projects, which we have a lot of resume for that. And then also public projects, which Brett will talk more about that type of project.
I'll just step up here so you can hear me. Public sector projects are very unique projects and we're uniquely positioned to successfully deliver these projects from pre-construction to estimating into construction. We've got several C M A R relationships, including Duval, St. John's County Public School Districts and and several others in northeast Florida. We've delivered several very purpose-built projects for the Department of Management Services, similar to this project that we're discussing this evening. And we're also working extensively on the University of North Florida campus, among other C M I, C M A R relationships that we've built over the years. At Alden White Constructors, Billy Dale talked about it, we consider ourselves builders and we're, but we're uniquely positioned as a tenant improvement builder. We understand the risks involved with with remodeling an existing building that could affect schedule and costs and we're prepared to handle and deal and get ahead of those risks. For the last 20 years, we've been consistently ranked as a top tenant improvement builder in northeast Florida and and we've been ranked number one, excuse me, number one over the last four years running.
As the project development manager, my job is to develop the project through pre-construction. The very first thing we're going to do is develop a schedule, not just for pre-construction, but through the final construction completion date. That way, from the very get-go, we are focused on what needs to happen now in order to meet that completion date then. We're going to get design deliverables from Walker Architects, we're going to get those dates, what permits are needed and long-term items. With each design deliverable, our estimators are going to give you a budget. It's very important to do a budget check as the design is progressing because that's when we can make valuable changes. We can propose value engineering alternatives, cost alternatives. So when we finally go to the market with this project, there are no surprises. We know the budget and we know what we're going to pay to get that done. Walker Architects, your architect, will be doing design, quality control and coordination with their sub consultants. When we get the set of designs, we're going to do a constructibility review and we're going to look at it with a builder's perspective. Is this buildable and what other details do we need? Because we don't want to start the job and be held up with any of those things, items still outstanding. We have two permit specialists on staff and their job is to make sure we have all those permits that we need and inspections when we need them, so there are no scheduled delays. And last week, I was at a groundbreaking for a very similar facility like this, S M A Central Receiving Facility down in Flagler County. And when I left, the architect pulled me aside and he said, thank you. Thank you for making this easy. And that really is my job, to make this easy for you so we can set the project up right before we ever mobilize on site.
So I'll be working with Cindy to provide continuity through the course of pre-construction and into construction. And just kind of speaking to project approach, I mean, we understand that schedule, quality, budget are very important for these types of projects. And we're, I'd like to say, a very process-oriented company, which is not a very sexy thing to talk about, but it is very important, it's critical to deliver these projects successfully. So we manage some of those things, such as schedule, through our key performance indicators, tracking project milestones through the course of construction so we can deliver this project on time. We love construction, but we know we're putting this in place for your community to utilize. So it's important that we maintain that schedule. From quality standpoint, we we have regular pre-installation meetings for your critical systems, your roofing, your windows, building envelope to assure that you have a quality product, project that lasts a long time. Budget, from a budget standpoint, which is very critical, you know this is a very fluid market. Construction costs have been rising, materials have been hard to come by. We get ahead of that by early procurement, we buy out our subcontract, we track our materials, we make sure they're procured to avoid any risks to the cost of the project. And just, just kind of mentioning a project experience real quick. Cindy had mentioned the Flagler Central Receiving Project. This is one project that's ongoing right now. It's very similar to this, it's a purpose-built project. And we understand and will work with the design team on things like non-restraint fixtures, durable surfaces, all of those things that are critical for this type of facility to make sure they get specified properly and installed properly on this project.
The need for rehabilitation facilities is growing and our community needs it for the health and well-being of all of us. Billy Dale shared a very personal story about how it affected his family. I think all of us can agree that we have a similar story we could share. Alden White Constructors is very proud to be developing these facilities where they are needed the most. Flagler County, U F Health in St. John's, the care renovation, critical assessment intervention and referrals. Important to get it done very quickly. Canines for Warriors, one of my favorite projects. As a Navy veteran and fought and mother of a Navy pilot, I've been very involved with Canines for Warriors since before I came to Alden White Constructors. We are currently building the Warrior Operations Center in Nokati. And the project you see on there, the vet clinic, is a project we are doing with Walker Architects, the same architect you will be utilizing. I recognize Canines for Warriors provides a different type of rehabilitation facility than you're looking at, but it is a very important facility for our warriors who have sacrificed so much to keep us safe.
I I talked about it at the start, it it really comes down to, do you have the passion and do you have the expertise in order to complete a project like this? We've shared about our passion for projects, you know, we want to impact our community where our people live, play and and sleep. And apparently, we've got mobility fees we've got to be concerned about. This is a, an interesting process. Really appreciate the time that y'all take. You know, I know that it's a short week, you know, the only thing that I want to be voting on this week is yams or no yams. So I do appreciate the time that you take to go through this. We want to be your partner in this process as as we've partnered with numerous other entities that we've discussed. Would love to open it up for questions, but again, thank you for taking the time here today.
Thank you. Any questions for Alden White? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you, good evening. I'm Ryan Taylor with Scorpio Construction. I am the development and operational manager here for our northeast Florida team. We're super excited to be here tonight to talk about the Substance Use Disorder Facility, a project that I think we are very well lined up for. We've got the right team, we've got the right folks that understand what the county is expecting from our previous experience as well as understanding facilities that are associated with healthcare and more importantly, the A C A inspections that go along with the state of Florida requirements. I'll go ahead and get started with here, here's our team. This is probably the most important component of what I want to talk about today is this is a team that's well experienced. We've got a deep bench of folks that understand how to work like this or work on projects like this. But the main thing is we want to make sure that we're focusing on Clay County. We want to make sure that your priorities become our priorities, we're being good stewards of your budget because we know time and budget is a component for every project. There's only so much time we have, there's only so much budget that you have available. We want to make sure we're very cognizant of that. Here we go, is our presenting team, it's the team that's with me today. My responsibility is going to be overseeing the whole entire process from the very beginning of pre-construction all the way through the end of the warranty phase. I'm going to ensure that we've got the right resources in place and again, that our priorities continue to align with your priorities and we're being good stewards of your budget. Antonio Franzese, excuse me, right here, is going to be our senior project manager. He's a manager that is currently working on the economic development building next door. He has a great experience both with new construction as well as interior renovations. So he's got a diverse, diverse background in different projects that he's done, including healthcare projects, I think lines very well with this project. He's also going to be our main point of contact. He's currently our main point of contact for the county now. He's built great relationships with those folks and we want to continue that on. And then Rob Collins, he's going to be our field manager, he's our boots on the ground. He's currently also working on the economic development building. And his three main focuses are going to be quality, we're going to make sure that we do it right, it's going to be installed correctly. Safety, we want to make sure that everybody that comes into the project site also goes to the project site the same way, walking. And then lastly, schedule, that's the most important thing that he's going to be focusing on. He's going to make sure that we stay within those constraints of the schedule and allow us to maximize that budget. All right, moving on to some of the projects that we've done, we've, we're a community-centered building, we've builder, we focus on working in our community, the communities that we live and work in. We've had some great opportunities here in the Clay County area, both working for the school system as well as here and for the county. One, a couple I'd like to point out up there in the upper left-hand corner is our build-out of the health department here recently. And then obviously, down there in the bottom, in the middle, there is our economic development building that we're very proud of and looking forward to turning that over to Ms. Sharice and here in February. Also, I want to talk about our experience working in healthcare-related facilities. I know this is a substance use facility, but it correlates a lot with our healthcare work and we've been able to do most of our healthcare work in a renovated-type process where we've gone inside hospitals, we've gone inside other facilities that are associated with healthcare and do renovation work right next to people that are operating on people or doing diagnostics next to it. So we have a really good, keen understanding, again, of what it takes from a healthcare perspective, but also what it takes from an A C A inspection. And then also, I want to talk about our experience. And then also, I want to talk about our experience working with Walker Architects. It goes back more than a decade ago, when both Dominic and Joe started their firms. You can see there, the graphics there, we've got 12-plus clients, $142 million worth of work together, and we've delivered 45 projects. But what that really speaks to is our relationship, our ability to collaborate, our ability to keep each other accountable for what we need to do, and our ability to work through the design process and making sure that, again, we're staying in our time constraints, but we're also working within the budget that is set for the project. So it continues to be that time and budget, time and budget. We want to make sure that we're following those along as we go through the process. And then for each project that we like to do, or we present on, we always want to find out what's the why behind the project. What are we really trying to do here? We want to capture that vision so that we can apply it to our construction. So the first thing there is, you know, obviously, creating spaces that matter for people that care. That's really important there. And then supporting the county's vision of having exceptional services for your residents. And then lastly, you know, you want a functionality, a safe and patient-oriented facility that you can service all of the residents here in town. But I think the most important thing, if you add those all up, it's really about Clay County having a facility that they can use to treat and help out residents here in town. You don't have to now send them to another county for treatment. You can do it right here, and you can service it right here in Clay County. And that's what we want to capture, and then we want to apply that to how we operate and how we build your building. Then we want to talk about actual project and what we would be doing on the project. So it really starts when we go through our project. It goes with our CSI. And that's not crime scene investigation, it's circulation, separation, and isolation. So it starts off with the circulation process, where we want to make sure we know where everybody is, we're separated from the folks that are in and around the facility, or in and around the site. And then it goes into separation, where we're assigning, or we're establishing boundaries around our building, so we can understand where those boundaries are, and we don't have to have people in and out that don't need to be there. And then finally, the isolation. That's the component where we want to make sure we understand where all your utilities are. We don't want to interrupt them, we don't want to interrupt the neighborhood across the street, or the businesses down the street. We want to make sure that we're isolating those and making sure that those aren't interrupted. So how, this is how we've applied it to your project. So this is an aerial of the facility. It's right there on County Road 220. As you can see, the first component there is the white arrows. That's the circulation aspect. This is how we're going to get outside, in and out of the project. You know, right now, we know that County Road 220 is under construction, so there's going to be some really coordination that we need to do with our deliveries to make sure that we're in and out of the building, or, excuse me, in and out of the site without any interruption. And then it goes into the separation. You can see the yellow line around the building there. That's going to be our fence, that's going to be how we keep ourselves away from people walking on the sidewalks or anybody else that's just curious of the building. We want to make sure we keep it locked up. And then lastly, it goes back to the isolation. You can see the three dots up there, green, blue, and red, that's where the utilities are. We've already identified, and we already know what we need to do to stay away from those. And then the schedule. We've already set down through your programming, our past experiences, to try to understand what we need to do from a scheduling standpoint. So we took some liberty with Walker's design time. We said, "Okay, if they start in January, let's say they're done in the end of May." That's about a five-month period there. We get a month to put our GMP together, and then we're getting ready to start there at the end of July. As we move through the process, we think it's about a seven-to-seven-and-a-half-month schedule, and then we would be finishing up there in the first part of March. You know, this is a very preliminary schedule. As we move forward with the design, working with Walker, we'll be able to tighten this up, maybe even make it a shorter schedule, allowing us to be really efficient, and allowing you guys to be able to open up the facility and get in there sooner. And then lastly, I wanted to highlight a project that I think is, has a lot of similarities to the Substance Use Facility. This is the University of Florida Student Health Center. It's a project that we worked on with Walker a couple of years ago. It has a multitude of different healthcare services inside the building. One part of that is substance use facility area. It's more of an outpatient facility, but it is definitely part of the programming inside that building. And again, it was working with Walker, and we were able to meet the client's budget, but also meet the timeframe that was associated with that. And with that, I'll turn it over for any questions that the group may have here today.
Questions? Commissioner Burke.
So, in designing this, what do you, what do you look at as far as, you know, people that are coming here are going to need privacy, and, you know, what do you think about when you're designing it, that, in that regards? Because it's not just going to be, I would not want to just come into a regular medical office and, you know.
Yeah.
So can you?
Well, there's always design guidelines, and Walker Architects will probably be, would be more in tune with the actual design, will be more the construction part of that. But we'll be intimately involved with how those walls get set up, how many walls there are, how it's all laid out, what the costs are associated with that. But definitely, there will definitely be some sort of entrance area that'll be secured, and then you'll be able to go back there into the inpatient, outpatient areas for your privacy.
Okay. Have you, you haven't done anything specifically, the substance use?
Yes, yeah. In the, for the University of Florida, it was a component within there, yeah.
That's right, okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And lastly, but not least, Yvonne Rivers.
We're Yvonne Rivers. We have been doing business 50 years here in Clay County. We know it's important to keep the tax dollars in Clay County, and all of our employees are residents of Clay County. Seventy percent of our subcontractors are also based here locally in Clay County, and we just want to thank you for the opportunity to partner with you and to continue working with you. This is our proposed project personnel team. Here with me today, I have the Director of Operations, Ginger Rivers, our Project Manager, Tim Cromie. He is specialized in CMAR renovations under $4 million. And then Buddy Ellison, he's our Senior Renovation Superintendent. He's had over 30 years of working on renovation experience as a hands-on superintendent. And so this slide just shows to you that we have the capacity and the capability, and we're available to be working on this Substance Use Disorder Facility project. And now, we know that the county is very cost-conscious, and so these three factors provide the most benefit to Clay County: budget estimating and value engineering, competitive bidding, ODP and sales tax savings. And so, looking back on the project that we're working with you today, with the Clay County Animal Services Project, we've saved to-date in value engineering efforts over And that's just from the construction drawing, design phase. You know, if we have the ability to provide more input at the 30, 60, and 90 percent design phase, we can provide a much more substantial amount of value engineering. Competitive bidding, as I said, we're a local GC, a lot of our subs are from Clay County, and with that, that provides a lower overhead cost for the subcontractors. And so that provides a substantial amount of cost savings for the county as well. ODP and sales tax savings, on the animal shelter, our team has become very familiar with all the ODP and sales tax forms and processes that the county requires, and so we've saved over $346,000 in sales tax savings. All in all, total savings of over $1 million and counting. I just submitted a few weeks ago another value engineering proposal to save a couple thousand dollars for the animal shelter as well. So we didn't just stop that at the beginning. We've continued doing it throughout the entire process, and we will until the job is completed. And so, this is the value that EBR provides to the county. We provide cost efficiency, we're effective, we're ahead of schedule on the animal shelter job, and we have the expertise in renovations and medical work, and Ginger is going to go more into detail on that for you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. We have been in business 50 years. We have done over 200 CMAR projects that are under $4 million. We have multiple CMAR contracts with other agencies, and we are, this is our wheelhouse. This is where we are most effective. Seventy percent of our income and work comes from renovations of this size and scope. The means and methods to do a renovation project is the same. The processes are the same. We go in, we demo an area, we reconfigure the plumbing, mechanical, electrical, we put in the new walls, finishes, IT, safety and security, and life safety for the finished product. On the bottom left, there is an example of one that we're in construction, is this is a internal renovation. It has safety and security, which we think is going to be very important to your new facility. The one on the right is a Veterans Center that we just completed. It has multiple common areas and offices as well. You have a type of hybrid situation with this. This is not a normal interior office renovation. It has aspects of treatment, medical, as well as residential stays. That being said, this is a medical facility that we have built in the past, and it's overkill for this project. But what I'm trying to show in it is, once we build a shell for a medical facility, we go in and we build out each, you know, each specific use for the physician. Some of it's orthopedic, some of it's like this, is neurosurgery. We have built 43 medical facilities as well, and all the build-outs, as well as 19 individual interior build-outs, just like the one that you have. In Clay County, the ones that you might be familiar with is the Fleming Island Surgery Center, with the medical complex beside it, and three other buildings acrossed. We have built the Clay Surgery Center, as well as the medical facility beside it, as well as the Orange Park Medical Center, which is just like this, as well as another building like this that has rehab facility and multiple sleep centers. So it has all the components that you need. We, in addition, we have built something that's very, very similar to what you have, which is, we've renovated the City Rescue Mission in Jacksonville. They have two facilities. One is short-term stay, one is recovery for long-term. And I do want to go back and revisit your hybrid situation. Part of what you do for this facility is going to have long-term care, which means people are housed, you have special conditions. Basically, what this is, that is similar, so similar to this, is assisted living facilities, because it has 24-hour care, treatment centers, common areas, janitorial, with all the individual living spaces that this is going to require. This is Moose Haven. We were at, you know where Moose Haven is, in Orange Park. It's a 60-acre complex. We were onsite for 12 years renovating and building that facility. The construction at the bottom, we were doing, but it's irrelevant to this project. What is relevant? That is a medical facility that they have on staff, or on the project. Half of the building is short-term use, the other half is long-term. We renovated that. And also, we renovated another building, which is Vivian Bourne, same type of use that you have here. The next one we did was Peeler Hall. The next one we did was a memory care facility, which has a lot of what you're going to have, a lot of high-security lockdown areas, as well as the Adult Daycare Center. And we did another renovation, same size, same scope, which is the Buckeye Building. What I want to say is, we were here for 12 years renovating the same type of projects you have. They didn't have us there for 12 years because we're charming. They did it because we're cost-effective. And their primary focus was getting the job done in the budget, the budget that they had allocated. That was their focus, and I believe that's your focus. We do have a lot of Clay County experience throughout the years. We have renovated your two health clinics, one in Bear Run. There was one that you just recently mowed down that we did years ago. We've also done the courthouse, we've done the fairgrounds, and we are currently working on the Clay County Animal Shelter. We have enjoyed working for Clay County through the years. We're effective. We're essential, I mean, we do essential work for the county, and we also are very experienced in this type of work. The size, the scope is our wheelhouse, and this type of facility is not new to us. This is what we do every day, and we would like to continue working for the county, to serve our county.
Thank you. Questions for Yvonne Rivers? All right, thank you. Okay, before we do the scoring vote, is there a discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know, comment, I guess. So when I look at the tabulation, Yvonne Rivers scored very low as far as similar projects, but she just noted tons of projects that she's done similarly, they've done. So I don't, I don't understand that.
So I'm looking back over that real quick, just a moment. That, that's the average of our three raider scores. We did ask that they include everything today and what they had in their original proposal, but they may not have just spelled it out as clearly as they did during the presentation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just have a comment. I want to thank all three firms for coming out tonight. Very capable, very knowledgeable, and it makes our job really hard tonight.
Agree. All three are great partners of Clay County, so no matter what we decide, please don't stop bidding on county projects, because this is what it's about. So recently, and I will say that we sat together at the Clay County procurement, she did not break the quiet period. So if you saw me sitting with her, she did not say. But, but doing business in Clay County, I know you were all there, you all had representation there, doing business with Clay County is important, and Commissioner Reniger often will talk about, sometimes we get only one bidder, you know, on these things, and we need to have competitive bids, we need to have these conversations in the public. You know, all three of you are passionate about the same thing we are, saving taxpayer dollars and maximizing taxpayer dollars, so I appreciate that very much. Any other discussion? It's weird, because normally, we would entertain a motion and then have discussions, so I wanted to open it up, since we don't typically on these. No other discussion? Okay. Ready? Ready.
Commissioner Scrimella, your scores?
One, Scorpio. Two, Yvonne Rivers. Three, Alden White.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke?
One, Yvonne Rivers. Two, Scorpio. Three, Alden White.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Um, one, Yvonne Rivers. Two, Alden White. Three, Scorpio.
Commissioner Compaugh?
One, Scorpio. Two, Yvonne Rivers. Three, Alden White.
Commissioner Reniger?
I have one, Alden White. Two, Yvonne Rivers. Three, Scorpio.
I might have to do some math. Not me. Not me.
Do you have Yvonne Rivers?
Uh, yes. Yvonne Rivers at eight.
Yes, ma'am.
Scorpio at 10. Alden White at 12.
12, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
So from here, staff will meet with Yvonne Rivers, negotiate a contract, and bring that back for board approval.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all. Okay, item number 14, public hearing, Reg. Public hearing on ordinance and resolution to amend the capital improvement plan and other budget amendments. Reg's pencils, pencils, multiple pencils had to be sharpened on this, but thanks for joining us tonight.
Green and red pencils.
Yeah.
So, uh, this item is an annual exercise, which essentially bridges last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Working with the staffs of Clerk Finance, Purchasing, Grants, and the Capital Projects Team, we've determined final revenues received, final spends on projects, those projects are in capital, operational and grant projects, and transfer adjustments to continued services and projects through this fiscal year. A public hearing is necessary for, that there are adjustments to the County Road 220 projects and the bonded road transfer, transportation projects.
Okay.
So that's pretty much a quick summary.
All right. Questions for Reg? Okay. I will open the public hearing on the amended, the capital improvement portion of the capital improvement plan. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to entertain a motion. So you want to coach us on voting? Do we, can we vote on all four at one time, or separate?
No, you definitely need to vote on the ordinance one, separate one.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion on item number one, the ordinance.
Approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Now I'll entertain a motion on items two, three, and four.
I'd like to move approval of the resolutions two, three, and four, amending the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in, oh, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Reg.
Thank you. And we need what signatures?
Okay, got it, on it. Got my blue pen, I'm ready. Okay. Item number fif- item number fifteen, public hearing on Liberty Ambulance Service application for renewal of their COPCN, Chief Foray.
Good evening. Hopefully I have a quick and easy one for you tonight. We're here for a public hearing for Liberty Ambulance Services Incorporated to approve their COPCN renewal. Their application was complete and well in order. There is a representative here tonight if you have any questions for them. Through the Fire Chief's review, it is recommended for approval.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Foray or for the applicant, Liberty Ambulance Services? All right. It is a public hearing, is that a public? I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move approval.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Thank you for sitting through our meeting, Liberty Ambulance. Whoever you are. Oh, you are. Thank you for, for your partnership. All right, we are back to new business. Item number twelve is the caper. Megan had to take a little nap, but she's back.
Yes, good evening. Per our citizen participation plan and HUD requirements, we are required to brief the board each year on our CDBG grant activities. So in FY twenty-five, we spent a total of two hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents on eligible activities. That included eight neighborhood cleanups, including four in High Ridge, two in Tanglewood, and two in Bel Air Meadowbrook. It also included ten home rehab projects, and three sidewalk projects in Orange Park, including sidewalk replacements on portions of Harrison, Jefferson, and Washington. In FY twenty-six, we will utilize the remainder of those funds towards additional sidewalk projects that have been prioritized. Per our citizen participation plan, we did open a public comment period for the caper to be reviewed by the, the public. That period ran from Friday, November seventh, through Friday, November twenty-first. And we did also host an in-person public meeting on Tuesday, November eighteenth, at the Middleburg Clay Hill Public Library. We did not receive any public comments, which for the caper, we generally take as good news, because this is the end-of-year report. So that means that communication is, is flowing well between us and our stakeholders on these projects. So tonight, we're asking for board approval to submit the end-of-year report to HUD by the December deadline.
Okay, questions for Megan? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval, caper report.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One, one thing I, through the chair, one, one of the things I noticed is, uh, community cleanups. We take the manpower that we use for community out of Hyde. And, and yet, I think that's something the grant could fund. You know, we get more bang for the buck for the grant, but we're, we're moving into times of austerity, you know, and we don't have enough manpower to do what we need to do. So I'd, I'd like to look at that, you know, just to, to look at payment of that workforce, usually on a Saturday, which, you know, we're, we're asking our, our forces to get out there on a non-working day. And I, I think that's something we ought to look at.
Yeah, I, I would certainly look at it with you. I, I will say that I've participated in High Ridge cleanups. I haven't done the Bell, Bell Air or Tanglewood. But what I would encourage those two neighborhoods, and if we expand it, I'd like to actually see it expanded into other low-income neighborhoods in, in our area. Because what we've seen in High Ridge Estates is the initial ones. I think there were a number of county employees out there, and certainly people from outside the neighborhood. This last weekend, two weeks ago, anyway, recent, their most recent cleanup, they had more trash picked up than they've ever, it was almost seven thousand pounds of trash, I think. And I think maybe Jason went outside of that, no county staff went, and the cleanup volunteers were almost exclusively neighborhood residents. So they are seeing the benefits of it. So the, the, the efforts do pay dividends that they are now seeing to clean up. In fact, one of the dumpsters overnight was filled, and they, it, like, not overnight, but it was, they started the cleanup, and some of the people who were kind of coordinating volunteers saw no one at this one location, went to some of the other locations, because they had three or four, and so they were, they were spread out through the neighborhood, came back, and it was completely full of tires, which came from the neighborhood. So they knew where they came from, but it was people doing the work inside the neighborhood. So I think it, it will eventually play out, and so maybe that will, I don't know how it's, the payment goes to staff, though.
You know, we have to look at exempt employees and non-exempt employees and all that. I'm sure we can work through that. But it is one of those, uh, high-neat evolutions. I mean, I, I was on the Bell Air, and we could have stayed there for a week, actually. And so it just, it, and, and trash begets trash. You know, we, we had, just as an example, we had a location that accumulated two mattresses. No, three, four, five. It ended up being nine mattresses. So i- if we don't clean it up, it'll get worse. And if we do clean it up, maybe people get the word that, maybe this isn't the right place to put your mattress. So I think we, it's a, it's an effort well worth the, it's an evolution well worth the effort, I think, so.
I agree. And I would also just add, because we can't take enough public opportunity, that Sharice would like to say, call for your bulk pickups, because public works ends up having to spend county dollars and effort and time to pick up stuff that's dumped. All right, anything else? Okay. We had a motion, did we approve it? No, we had a motion and a second, and we were discussing. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Item number sixteen, acceptance of resignation from Charter Review Commission. Randy Bowman was from District Three, submitted his resignation. He said, there's just too much going on with, my understanding is, with the Orange Park Mall, new owners and...
Yeah, he, Second Horizon just purchased the property, and I'm sure they're going through a transition. Their, their goal is to make the mall more viable and more hospitable to the residents. So I imagine Randy has a to-do list that mile long, so. Yeah, he's, he's resigned, but Engelbrecht is also from District Three, so he's, he was my alternate, so I think they already installed him as in the CRC.
So do we need to actually accept the resignation, but we don't need to approve Bill, because we had already approved him on the original list?
And the charter just automatically sends them up.
Right.
Okay. All right, so is that a motion to accept?
I move approval of the resignation of Randy Bowman.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Acceptance of resignation of the Clay County Board of Adjustment, now councilman, Brandon Ludwig, from his resignation. So he was appointed last Monday night as a councilman on the City Council of, City of Keystone Heights, therefore can no longer serve on one of our boards. So we need to accept his resignation.
Wish the councilman best of luck, and I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just in follow-up to that, so the application is open, and remember that this is a board that we really used your help last time to find us members who are able to attend the meeting. So we just, again, ask for you to please help us fill it.
And it's not limited.
It's anywhere in the county? Okay.
And it's usually, it's always a Thursday night, it's usually the third or fourth, fourth Thursday.
And I would just say for the new members, I don't, because I don't remember timing, but the Board of Adjustment is really important for us, because, and that we pay attention to what they're doing, because the public will ask about it. And we used to have a, a part of our, I'm going to mess it up, Beth, but you can give me hand signals or whatever, but we had a part of our code that could be tweaked by going to Board of Adjustment. And it's how we ended up with Storage Unit on 220, kind of where the old Sonic was. And then also the one behind the racetrack on Blanding Boulevard in Middleburg. And so we ended up being able to close that loophole, but our Board of Adjustment was working within their purview. So pay attention to what these boards are doing and read their minutes, because, but anyway. Not to criticize, we appreciate the ones who serve. However, there are some that, anyway, are better than others. Commissioner Renninger?
And, and that's what I want to, I want to give a shout-out to Brandon. He, he is the guy who did his work, he did his homework. And he, he did a lot of good things for the Board of Adjustment. So I'm, we're, I'm sorry that you leave him, but I'm happy he's still here in the county, so.
Yeah.
Still with us.
And he works, so a good example, for those who say they don't have time. Brandon works a full-time job, and he's also chairman of the Young Republicans for the whole state of Florida. So he works a lot. But anyway. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. We have a few bid, one bid-opening tabulations for the Old Jennings Long Bay Traffic Signal Intersection Improvements. So for those who live in that area, headache is coming with construction, but more relief at some, some point. All right. We are to the reorganization of the BCC. Mr. County Manager, do you want to?
Madam Chair Commissioners, this is the time where, uh, one of you would nominate somebody that would take over your position as chairman. And then from there, we'll take a pause and then talk about vice chair.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Vice Chair Burke for...
I'll second a motion.
Thank you all.
Vice Chair, okay. Any discussion, any other comments?
Or any other motions?
Or any other motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any? Unanimously, five-oh, congratulations, Commissioner Burke.
Thank you.
Now Chairman Burke.
It's my honor.
We think.
Yes ma'am.
Congratulations.
And then just looking for a motion for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Scrimolo for Vice Chair.
Okay. Are there any seconds?
I'll second a motion.
Okay. Any other motions? Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any names? Unanimous, congratulations, Vice Chair Scrimolo.
I just want to say, easy-peasy, St. John's County could learn from us. I know I'm going to get texts, I'm going to get texts from some of my friends over there, right? Anyway. I had to take the little dick. Okay. We are to our second public comment period. It is six-twenty-five PM, but I do not have any cards that indicate they want, you would want to speak at our second public comment period. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the second public comment period. Commission Auditor. Thank you. County Attorney.
Just a couple of items. First of all, the Charter Review Commission, the next meeting is December fifteenth, which again is a Monday. The e-bike that you asked me to look a little bit into, we're still gathering other counties, but just to lay the framework from what we gathered so far. So currently, under Florida statute, it does have provisions for e-bikes, and it allows their use wherever bicycles are allowed. But it does authorize the local communities to be able to come in and provide restrictions. Such restrictions can include restrictions on sidewalks, and as to the speed on sidewalks. So the ones that we have compiled so far, what they usually do is, they provide a maximum of speed of ten or fifteen miles per hour on the sidewalk. They also provide a minimum age. So the minimum age is sixteen. And just to let you know, the legislature, there currently is a proposed bill. So because, as many of you know, the current e-bikes, some of them are making them go faster. So the new proposed bill actually has a new category for those types of bikes that exceed a certain power, that will be called electric motorcycles. And so there are restrictions on those as well. So we'll just sort of monitor that bill and see how they progress. Part of that bill also requires certain e-bike drivers to have driver's license. So there are some counties that have, require you to wear a helmet, that make it that if you're older than sixteen and you're on an e-bike, then you're not allowed to ride on the sidewalk. You have to ride in the road on the, like a, you know, another type of bike. So we're compiling that, but that's just sort of the lay of the land. St. John's, we did look at St. John's. They early on had an ordinance, but then recently, they did a resolution. And the resolution was really driven more towards education, and trying to get with the school system and make sure that the kids that are using e-bikes to get to school are educated on the use. So, a lot of it has to do with, if you're on an e-bike, when you come to like an intersection, what you have to abide by, you can't just keep going, you have to follow the pedestrian crossings and those type of items.
Commissioner Renninger?
Yeah, the proposed statute expands the use of, or the category of e-bike, I think it's beyond Series Three or Number Three, and, and it's in excess of twenty-eight miles an hour and seven-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts in, in the motor. And when you think about a bike doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour, and on a sidewalk, and you're with your grandkid or stroller or child, it really becomes a dangerous issue. And so, and as County Attorney alluded to, they're, they're talking about licensing, and, and age limits, and helmets, and all that kind of stuff. But it's really something that's an expanded use of personal transportation. And it, it's, it's going to get more prolific and more pronounced in the county, and we need to be ready for it, as some of the other counties are. So, but it, it, and they also allude that there may be some mechanics out there that augment the seven-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt to a larger electric motor, which it'll make it go even faster.
Like they do to golf carts, I mean, it's crazy what they can do.
And it sets fines, right, it provides fines.
This stat, proposed statute has fines if, if you're caught, you know, augmenting the power or supply of the e-bike and all. Anyway, it's, it's something we need to look at. Thank you.
I appreciate your work, and I also just want to give a shout-out. Our Health Department Director, Heather Huffman, is always a great partner to us. And she saw our last meeting where we discussed this, she sent some information over as well. So we appreciate that, Director Huffman.
And lastly, just happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. County Attorney, uh, County Manager?
Yep, Madam Chair, thank you. Just an update, just finalizing the schedule for our delegation meeting on the second and third of December. You all should have received, received a draft of that schedule, and we'll finalize that. Most likely on, on Monday, unfortunately, with Mercer scheduling speakers and that, but you have a very good draft for you all. December ninth, we have a workshop before our BCC meeting on the ninth. This workshop starts at ten o'clock here at the, at the boardroom, and we're going to discuss our strategic plan changes, KPIs, how we would update and publish those changes to the booklet. And then most importantly, we've added one other thing to it, the proposed tax property bill impacts that are out there. There are many of our, out there, that they even discussed during FAC, as most of you know, what that impact would be to our budget. So we'll give some examples. Troy's been working on this. We'll use data that FAC has requested from us. and, and build that and to kind of really kick off the budget prep early. Uh, we'll, we'll be in this year in December. Um, I think this will be very important for us all and the community to see what those impacts would be to our budget moving forward. Uh, pending that, I, by the way, I just wanna add, we have much to be thankful for here in Clay County and across the board. Um, I can't thank the staff enough, I can't thank you all enough as board, have, have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Pending any questions, that's all I had.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Comments, who wants to start? Commissioner Schuylkill, do you wanna start?
Sure, I don't have many tonight. Um, first, the, I got to attend the procurement conference, which was a really, really good event for local businesses to see kind of how Clay County operates. Um, the County Manager at the very end got up and kind of showed the website, and I think people were like, the reaction was like, oh my gosh, it's right there on the website, which was really cool. Um, but huge turnout, which was really cool from that, and then that's, that's really about it. Last thing, um, you know, the bike thing too, just a reminder, you know, parents, make sure your children are wearing helmets, and you, I mean, uh, I have two small children and my wife, who, who works in healthcare, um, has seen a lot of bad things over the years from ATV accidents, bike accidents, and more times than not, when people don't wear helmets, it doesn't end well. Um, I don't like wearing a helmet, but in, in front of my children, I one hundred percent wear a helmet, because it's the, it's the best practice there, but most of all, happy Thanksgiving. Uh, we have a ton to be grateful for and thankful for, and I hope everyone has a blessed one.
Commissioner Burke?
All right, um, I would like to thank all of y'all, of course, for choosing me, I promised to do the best job I possibly can do. I had said I definitely did not feel prepared at all for something like that for many, for a few years now, but I think I can, hopefully I'll be able to, with all your help, I can do all of you proud. The, uh, something you said about the resolution for, to educate for that, what about that with the AI? I mean, could we, could we look at something like that, uh, working with the school board for that to, as a resolution? I think it might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, get ahead of the game on that, I don't know. Um, and then, um, I'm very excited about the substance use disorder building and, and seeing that starting to come. I, you know, definitely have been one to push for that, and I, and very, definitely touches me, and so I'm so excited about that and to see that starting to come along. Uh, let's see, I think that was all I had, um, I think just definitely being thankful, um, but also just thinking about those people that have lost, their family members or loved ones, and any of those that are on their own, um, just pray that for those, for those people, and everyone have a great time with their families.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Comper?
Yes, um, just three things. Last week, we had the opportunity to be in Central Florida for the Florida Association of Counties Conference, and it never disappoints, learned so much. Uh, one of the things that was very interesting to me is that you, there, there are pressure points all over the state concerning the issues that we have been talking about over the last several months. Um, so we are not in a bubble here in Clay County, uh, so I just, um, I was especially appreciative of our counterparts across the state who were giving, giving us insight as to how they are navigating some of those concerns, and so I highlight that. I too want to just reiterate a, a hat tip thank you to Brandon Ludwig. Um, one thing about him having been on the Value Adjustment Board is that everyone had the same takeaway, that he is a class act, always prepared, always willing to contribute. And I would highlight that because Brandon is in his mid to late twenties, and he is shouldering a lot of responsibility. It's one thing to be involved in your community, it's something completely different to be serving at the state level for the young Republicans. And so I commend you, Brandon, for all of your hard work. Um, you're very impressive, and we appreciate that here in Clay. And then last but not least, happy Thanksgiving to our team here in Clay County. Year over year, it is a blessing to live and serve here, because so many of you, if not, dare I say, all of you are working towards making this a beautiful community to live in. And I am blessed every day being a part of it, blessed every day to live here. And so hats off to the County Manager, hats off to the County Attorney, hats off to the County Auditor, I can tell you guys, because you're here. Um, and then all of our county staff that's still here on Thanksgiving week, here we are twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes to seven. Thank you, and for all those who are at home, thank you. I'm very appreciative of the work that it takes to get things done here, and with that, have a good week.
Thanks. Commissioner Rettiger?
Yeah, I just have a few things, one, the Regional Council came out with their list of nominees for Excellence Awards, and we have a two or three that are being considered, and I wanna point out Leon's out there, Leon waved to, waved to us. Regional Council's, uh, has our back a lot of times and, and supports us quite a bit, so I wanna acknowledge your persistence and enduring to the bitter end here. The Oakleaf Library, I wanna make some comments, uh, I'm, I'm very pleased with that. Uh, we, you, you saw from Sam, the number of, uh, older residents we have, and, and even though today, you know, someone could be ambulatory and self-sufficient, I just had a close friend that had a medical incident on Saturday, I think it was, and, and he, he lost his wife several years ago, and he's getting up there in the age himself. But just overnight, he, he's becomes, you know, dependent on outside sources. So, uh, the fact that we have four senior centers, uh, you know, Keystone, Orange Park, Green Cove and Middleburg, uh, we, we have a big void up there, and so the library is, is gonna be a multi-use facility. Uh, I did notice that, uh, the, the, the children's area is probably the biggest area, and, and we need to kind of, you know, when you look at demographics for the nation, the number of children, that's one of the issues. Uh, there, there aren't a lot of little children gonna be running around for some reason. So is it right-sized, you know, we have a large area for children, fairly large area for adults, then there's a real small teen area, so maybe we can look at that. The third thing I noticed, and I recommended, we, we have many reasons to light our buildings on the outside with different colors of light, you know, I, I use the November as a veteran acknowledgement, and Gene goes out of his way to uplight the, a lot of the buildings, and it'd be nice to get that wired for external uplights, downlights, whatever, from the get-go. It's, it's not, we don't, we don't have to put the lights on, but we can wire it for lights as such. So if we can, I asked them to look at that. And the last thing I have is, we do have a lot to be thankful for. Family, friends and fellowship. It's, it goes on, it, it's very, very cordial here, and it's really cordial in, in the county. Like I said last meeting, I said I had a dinner engagement with a friend, and they, they brought up FCC and like, my heart stopped. But it was all positive, so, uh, I wanna thank everybody for all the good work we're doing, and the staff as well, thank you.
Okay, I just have a few things, a few more than you all, but I, I will go quickly. So we had at two o'clock this afternoon, the organizational meeting for the Value Adjustment Board, which the Clark's Office will do all the minutes, and, and that's really their thing. But these are interesting numbers, I thought that you all would be interested in. There are, there were two thousand one hundred and eighteen applications, and two thousand and thirty-three of those have been resolved. Um, that's between the Clark's Office and the Property Appraiser's Office, so that means they're working with citizens to address those issues. So I think that's important to note, and they do have about eighty they're still working on, um, and will probably end up having at least one hearing, um, so I thought that was just information you'd wanna know. Um, Beth Carson, who's our Director of Planning and Zoning, and Sharice provided me some emails that have been received for the Economic and Development Services Team's customer support, and we just wanted to give a quick shout out to these people. So they got an email regarding Christie Johnson. Um, so over, um, I won't redo the whole thing, but over a number of times, they, the family, over a number of years, the family has been working on kind of a family compound out on family land, that's eighty-five acres. That Christie has worked tirelessly and, and been extremely responsive and knowledgeable to help them overcome various hurdles in a professional and expeditious manner. And this, um, gentleman who sent the email has worked in engineering for over forty years with a number of government staffers, and he said, without hesitation, Christie has been among the best that he's worked with. So I thought shout out to her. And then, um, secondly, um, we got a shout out for Jessica Reyes, and it says she was so helpful giving me information and forms I needed for the septic inspection and, and what needs to be done. Not only did she do her job, she went out of her way to write down what I needed to have done and email me next steps, um, and then helped me after I got my approval and my septic letter. And the person who wrote the email said, who does that? Uh, but most people would only do the minimum, she went above and beyond, and, um, she goes on. Like she has a whole list, and so we'll just shout them out, Crystal James. Bless her sweet soul for dealing with me. Um, so she said, anyway, she goes on and talks about her, she shouts out Christie Johnson and Maria Haney and Teresa at the front desk, and then Laura Hansen, who was here earlier, she calls her my impact fee lady, um, so she helped her with all of that. And then thank you to Ruth, last but not least. And so, anyway, just wanted to give those employees shout outs and, uh, and read you that, I thought that was great. Um, I wanted to also read you quickly, and I, and I just found this on my chair today, so the County Manager can distribute it all to you, it's very beautiful, in a United States Navy folder, portfolio, but it's came directed to me, um, and it says, I'm writing to extend our, he's the Mark Brusco, Fire Chief of the Naval Air Station Jacksonville. He says, I'm writing to extend our sincerest thanks for your outstanding support during the Jelly Roll Concert held on the flight line on NAS Jacksonville. Your team's professionalism and dedication were crucial in ensuring the safety and well-being of those in attendance. Chief Mock's staff were key in making the event go off without a hitch. We deeply appreciate the dedication Chief Mock and his team provided care and treatment um, for fifty-six personnel who were treated on-site. It sounds like it got kind of wild. So anyway, despite the challenges we faced during the event, your department's swift and effective actions played a significant role in managing the situation and ensuring a safe environment for audience and performers. The seamless collaboration between our teams did not go unnoticed, and we are grateful for your unwavering commitment to the safety of the forty thousand personnel that attended the event. Please convey our gratitude to all firefighters and medical personnel who assisted. Their efforts were vital to the event's overall success, and we could not have done it without them. Thank you again for your invaluable support. We look forward to continuing our partnership in the future and working together to ensure the safety of all community events. Sincerely, Fire Chief Mark Brusco, NAS Jacksonville. So maybe if you wanna know what happened as Chief Mock offline, because it sounds like a pretty interesting night, or day, or whatever it was, but anyway. So Chief Mock, please express our thanks to you and your entire staff, I know a lot of them watch, so thank you for all you do. I wanted to give you a little quick, um, thought process, you don't have to think over your holiday, but when you get back to work, um, Commissioner Burke and I attended the TPO meeting as we normally do, and so I wanted to, um, tell you that Richard will be soliciting, or, um, through, I think it's through January, working on two different things. So they have a list of priority projects for the LOP, which is for bike and ped funding, so bike and pedestrian. The LOP identifies potential projects for FDOT's Transportation Alternatives Program and the Shared Use Non-Motorized Trails Program. We get one priority to put on the list, and they said that it can be, um, uh, I can't really read my handwriting, something, a, a, oh, a bigger project, I was like a burger project? I must have been hungry when I wrote this, but anyway, can be a bigger project that is broken up. So that they're looking for one to one and a half million dollar range projects, but it can be one of your bigger ones, but broken up. So if you have things that you're thinking of in that range, um, we don't have a ton of pedestrians in District Four, so, but I'll work on my, my ideas, but, um, and then get those to Richard, and then planning studies. The TPO and the FDOT are asking for study requests to perform in the FY twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. Studies performed by the TPO will be included in the Unified Work Program that's coming up, and some examples are like they did our dirt road study, they're doing a streetlight, lighting study for us right now. Um, so those are just two things that come to the top of mind. Richard, were there any other projects that we were supposed to pull, um, information? I wa, I also have circled the list of priority projects, but I don't, I didn't write notes, so I don't know.
I need Megan to kinda chime in on this. I think Megan has requested our twenty-five, top twenty-five roadway projects be delivered to you on the ninth, the next board meeting. It's not due until January twenty-third, which falls between meetings, so I'll turn it in by January twenty-third. It doesn't have to be adopted until the next meeting, the twenty-ninth, but what's, you wanna speak to that, Megan?
And the request is coming, um, just because the grant applications are due January twenty-second. So if we at least have a good idea of what direction the board is leaning, the Grants Department can start working on those applications and have a little more lead time to develop them.
And is that our same, like, working off the, the list we had last year, or?
Yes, exactly, this list, I will present to you a, I don't wanna call it a staff recommendation, but it'll have the top twenty-five with last year's top twenty-five. Remember last year, we do, we do some gymnastics, last year we moved the intersections south on State Road twenty-one up, so the City of Keystone could receive that grant. We wanna look at issues like that, that we may not be aware of at the staff level, that you guys are looking at for specific projects. But I'll get those to you, Megan, I'll get them to Megan, and she'll distribute those before the December ninth meeting, okay? Should be thinking about that.
Commissioner Rettiger?
Just, your final?
Oh.
I wanna, no.
No, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, it's not for Richard, so.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Um, and so I think that was all from the TPO, was that all? That's all I had circled. And then, um, so one of the things that I mentioned to the County Manager, which we're not exactly doing on the ninth of December, but hopefully we can watch it and do it. So Waukulla County, Commissioner Comper mentioned that, um, we were down, I guess the three of us and the County Manager and County Attorney were down at the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Priorities Workshop, and Waukulla County presented, and please know when I say this, I am not opposed to property tax elimination, I pay them myself, and I wrote that check already, and it was painful, anyway. Um, so I'm not opposed to elimination of it, um, but it doesn't come without consequences, because right now, nothing has been proposed to replace that revenue for local governments. And this is, you know, this is the state government proposing to eliminate it at the local level, because they don't use property taxes at the state level, so I think that that needs to be clear in the public. And in Clay County, all of our ad valorem taxes go to public safety, so it's really a big deal, it's fifty-four percent of our budget. So Waukulla County is, um, doing workshops, go ahead and starting their workshop, they're gonna do one at the beginning of December. Two, if, um, if property taxes were eliminated completely, their, their commissioners are workshopping, what would they prioritize? Because if you don't have a backfill of revenue, you would have to make cuts. And what would our priorities be? And they're doing it in kind of rather large buckets, you know, what, what is obviously public safety? So you would have, you know, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department at the top of your, um, at your list. So then what's next, maybe emergency management, but you know, they're forced ranking their departments. And so how do you, how do you go through public works and, and parks and libraries and things like that? Um, the, the, Waukulla County Commissioner that was talking with me about it, he said, look, we only have one library in the whole county, and we're expanding it right now. And he said, I'm afraid we're gonna expand this beautiful new building and have to never open it, because we can't afford to. So, um, Waukulla County is, is workshopping elimination of complete ad valorem and elimination of homestead ad valorem, and kind of what would that look like for their county? And I understand there's a risk. And I understand there's a risk for employees, and we're not trying to cause any panic to anybody, but we have to deal with realities. The governor has said he will accept nothing less than this being on the ballot. And if, and what is important, and what Ralph Thomas in Waukulla County said, and I thought his words were very poignant, he said, you know, what's important is that the voters understand, if I go and I check that yes box in the ballot in November of twenty-twenty-six, this is what it will mean in my county. This is what I'm actually voting for. Because it is, I'm voting to pay less money. We all pay a ton of money. So I thought it was worthwhile, I thought it was worthwhile to bring it up to you. Commissioner, yeah.
So, you know, I feel like we all, I mean, I've been in different meetings with our state representatives, and we've all asked them, okay, so what's the, what's the plan? And we aren't getting any feedback about that. So true, I mean, so are we just going to wait until they tell us? Or are we going to do something? And I think that's definitely a good, a good way to be proactive. I mean, it's scary to think about. And of course, we all would love to pay less money. But yeah, we have to figure that out. And so I think that's a great idea. I really do. Yeah.
And then, let's see, oh, the other, next thing I wanted to tell you is for Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. If anyone does not have anyone to spend Thanksgiving with, and you happen to want to drive to the south end of the county, Keystone Heights Methodist Church, for years, my grandmother started this. My grandmother was one of the founding members of that church more than forty years ago. And she was alone, because we lived away some of my childhood. And so she was alone some, and she, they started a Thanksgiving dinner at the church. And so people bring dishes, they provide the meats and stuff, but there'll be plenty to eat. So if you don't have something to bring, and you don't have somebody to spend Thanksgiving dinner with Keystone Heights Methodist Church at one o'clock Thursday, somebody donated a thirty-one pound turkey. And in church, two weeks ago, they said, we need somebody to foster the turkey and cook it. So my, I said, wait, we can do that. So we cooked it today. I put it in the oven before I left this morning. My husband took it out. He just sent me pictures. So I was telling Heather about it earlier. So Heather, I'll show you the pictures of my turkey. We're not eating part of the thirty-one pound turkey, but we made it. But anyway, Commissioner Burke.
Crosspoint Church on two twenty is also doing that. I'm sure there's other ones too. So just, you know, I'm sure there's a way you can find out all that information about all the churches probably that are doing it.
Yeah, but not a lot. And, you know, and then some restaurants, Richard said he's going out to eat, so that's good. But anyway, so anyway, happy Thanksgiving. And then I wanted just to say thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your chairman for this year. And it's a lot of extra work, and they don't pay you anything extra. But anyway, I, it's been a pleasure, and I've enjoyed it. I will miss sitting beside Commissioner Comper and Commissioner Burke. But, because I'll probably take my old seat right down there by Christie and Tara, but that's okay. I started down there, right? So anyway, anyway, with that, happy Thanksgiving. Did you have anything, County Manager?
Madam Chair, just lots of events for Christmas are already going to be happening on the upcoming Saturdays, December sixth, December thirteenth. There are many that are listed. We'll make sure to get them out. I know Laura's tracking that, the tourism department, and Tim also from Emergency Management. But I know that's kind of jumping ahead of Thanksgiving, but we don't have a meeting till the ninth. So I just wanted to mention that to everybody.
No, absolutely. Shop small, stay local. And I did speak, so anyone who went to the Farm City Dinner last Thursday night, they thought, if they got their invitation, they thought they were going to hear Congressman Bean, and they got me, because the Speaker canceled days at home. So I spoke, and I said, see if you can shop for your Thanksgiving dinner from local farms. And so one, in Commissioner Burke's district, Middleton Farms, I know has greens. There's some others. I don't know if you can get a turkey yet, or I think that you had to probably put your reservation in a while ago to get a local turkey. But great, great message to shop small. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, meeting adjourned.